Keep being seven o'clock. I would like to open the school committee meeting. I would like to start by wishing everybody a happy new year. I think we have an exciting agenda tonight. We have some very, very good news for the community of Foxborough. The first item on the agenda is the recognition of a donation from Mr. and Mrs. John Spinney, who will do here shortly. We will then review the nature of the gift and why it was necessary to call an emergency meeting of the school committee on Christmas Eve in order to accept the gift. And we will follow that with an acceptance of yet another gift, an anonymous donation. We will then have visitors, approval of the minutes. And the next item on the agenda is the American Association of School Administrators, where we'll talk to the community about the fact that Superintendent of Schools of Foxborough was named Superintendent of the Year for the state of Massachusetts. So he's one of 50 top superintendents in the United States of America. I think it's very exciting for the town of Foxborough. At 8:05, we'll do a budget overview. At 9:05, a report of students attending private parochial vocational technical schools. Following that, we're going to be discussing our meeting with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. As everybody knows, we have put together a proposal for the update of the high school. We had a very successful meeting with the state, where the state wants to go forward in partnering with us to the next step, and I believe make a very huge step in the renovation process for the high school with state assistance. And so we'll be talking about that. We'll then have a Terranova testing update, an update again on another exciting topic, full-day kindergarten, which I know is something that's very important to many people in the community. We'll have a communication plan update, an update on the policy review committee, and then other matters followed by adjournment. There'll be no executive session tonight. I see that Mr. and Mrs. Spinney have now joined us. So if you would like, would you please just come up to that table right there, just move one chair with you? We know which is the shy one of the family, huh? Mr. and Mrs. Spinney were very kind to call me on Christmas Eve around 10 o'clock in the morning to indicate they were considering making a series of donations, and one of the issues that they were considering donating for was the remaining portion of the band uniforms. And we spent some time talking about why I thought that was important. And they spent some time that day thinking about all the different things that they could donate to. And a little bit afternoon time, John called me to say that he would like to donate appreciated stock, which not only was appreciated to him, but since he gave it to us, it's appreciated pretty substantially. I think on one day alone, it went up $6, so a very, very generous gift. By the time John had called me at noontime, the town hall had already been closed. There was nobody in the school district for the day because it was a holiday. So I called the superintendent. We talked to the town manager. We talked to legal counsel and said, what do we do? If we were to follow the regular process, we would have waited till the day after Christmas and posted a meeting for 48 hours hence, and on Friday, we would have accepted the gift. The problem was, the town didn't even have an account with Fidelity, and in creating the paperwork on the town side and then making the transfer happen by 12:31, there did not appear to be any way we could do that unless we called an emergency meeting. And so the town manager, as well as the superintendent and our attorney, referred me to the Massachusetts General Laws, which has a definition for the purposes of emergency meetings. Now, keep in mind, the school committee has not had an emergency meeting in the last 10 or 15 years, according to Wendy's review of the minutes, so it's not something we do very often. An emergency is a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding immediate action. I'm not sure how many people call a school committee member on Christmas Eve to talk about a $22,500 gift. We decided that was sudden. We decided it was unexpected, and that it required immediate action in order for us to get the paperwork processed. And so what we did is we notified the newspaper that we were going to call an emergency meeting at 3:15 in the afternoon. And under the open meeting law guidelines by the Attorney General, it says, when there is a need for an emergency meeting, the notice requirements of the law do not apply. Obviously, if you have to have an emergency meeting, hosting it for $40 doesn't help. But we thought, despite that, it was important to notify the newspaper that we were going to have this meeting. On Christmas Eve at 3 o'clock, there's not a lot of folks working. In fact, the Spinneys, who were kind enough to send me a letter, were exchanging gifts with family members at the very time we were meeting. We met for, I think, less than five minutes. We read the letter that they wrote us, and we gratefully and graciously accepted that gift and adjourned the meeting. We then notified the newspaper, the action that was taken, and we shared that information. And I think the newspapers did a marvelous job of covering the gift. I share all this with the community because there is an individual in the committee, two individuals in the community, who have written a letter to the school committee questioning the need for the emergency meeting, the appropriateness of the emergency meeting, and have stated that they believe the action we took jeopardizes the receipt of the gift and compromises the trust that the community has with their school committee. And I'm here to tell you that we feel very strongly, as a school committee, as a community, as a town, that if they proceed with their challenge of the gift, that the district attorney in Norfolk County will uphold what we did as right and appropriate. And Mr. and Mrs. Spinney, I want to thank you on behalf of all the citizens of Foxborough and all the young children who are going to benefit from those uniforms. I know that you wore those old uniforms at one point, and you know what those uniforms are like. And your gift is going to be a gift that gives for a very, very long period of time, and your generosity is just overwhelming, and we wanted you to come this evening and be recognized publicly.
I don't think we were one of the two people that challenged that gift, Larry.
No, it wasn't your children.
No, no. But it was certainly our pleasure to donate the State Street stock to the town. And as we talked about on the phone, you know, my wife and I grew up from modest means. Life's treated us pretty well, and the schools had a need, and we decided to do something beneficial to the town and to the kids that needed these uniforms. My wife and I were both band buddies at some point in our lives. I was recounting the five years I played trombone at Marlborough High School, and on the way up here, because I couldn't remember when I played and how long I played for, but it was five years. And, you know, anything we can do to help the town and the kids in particular here, and, you know, people use the kids all the time as an excuse to do things, but this is a good excuse to do things. And the band is just one of the jewels, crown jewels of Norfolk County and of the town. And, you know, we're proud of them, and it's a fantastic band, and it's got accolades since I've moved here, and it's got accolades since my wife's lived here. So we might as well do something to them. The timing was right, and your gift by your wife and yourself was unbelievably astonishing as well, and we didn't mind, you know, jumping on board and completing it by just, you know, our own, what do you call it, private donations to make it happen. So I find it hard to believe that somebody would challenge that, but maybe the appreciation sense we've given to you will cover some of the legal costs, but we felt great making that gift, and I'm glad we could get it done on Christmas Eve.
And you have how many children?
We have four kids, yeah.
And the oldest is?
Ten.
Ten. I say that because I want the community to know that you're not giving a gift that your children will immediately benefit from. And that makes it especially important. My son is not very happy with me that I didn't make the gift a year earlier, so he could have worn the uniform. But I think it's a conflict of interest to some degree when you give a gift that benefits your family directly. And, you know, there are many years away before your children will benefit from these uniforms, and that's what makes it very special. So on behalf of the entire committee, thank you so very much for what you've done. And I know, John, you know, you have worked tirelessly for the town in a number of different capacities, so it isn't just financial resources you've given this community. You and your family have provided a lot of your own time to make this a better place to live, and we thank you for that as well.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, there's a couple of things-
If I may, I would just, I think that you and Judy Harrington also deserve to be formally recognized by this board, and it's only right that we say thank you again to Judy and to you.
Thank you very much. What I would like to do tonight is I would like to have the committee once again formally accept the gift in open session. And so I will entertain a motion to accept the gift, made by Martha, second by Katie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I would also like a motion from the committee to sell the State Street stock. We have received a letter from the town that they are the custodian, and they need a vote from the school committee in order to sell the stock. Now, while we may not need the money right now, i.e. the payment for the uniforms is due, I don't think it's necessarily a good idea to let the money sit in the stock in the event that the stock price were to drop, and then we'd be sure. So I like a motion from the committee to sell. I have a motion by Kate. I have a second by Beverly. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Wendy, would you draft a note over to Vivian and tell her with a copy of the draft minutes that we have approved the sale of the stock tomorrow?
Yeah.
Or as soon as practical to do that? Now, Paul, a question relative to interest. And the interest that this money for the band uniforms will collect between now and the time the payment is due, where does that interest go?
I spoke to Mr. Scholes today, and he indicated that the interest would be credited back to the account.
Back to the account, so that in addition to the $62,005, or $63,000, or $64,000, whatever we end up with once we sell the State Street stock, all the interest will go there as well?
Yes.
All right, so we're in very good shape from that standpoint. So we voted to accept the gift again. We voted to... Now, there should be also one other vote at this point to reverse the vote from the last time to take the money from the revolving account. So I would like to entertain a motion to reverse that last vote. I have a motion by Martha, I have a second by Kate. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Wendy or Chris, is there anything that I have forgotten on this matter that I need to bring up?
No, I think we've done everything procedurally that we need to do.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is visitors. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chris.
Well, in this spirit, although it's not as much money, I received a letter from an anonymous source that would like to donate $500 for school supplies specifically in the early childhood area, which we could easily designate that. But I need an acceptance of that gift from you.
So we have a motion to accept from Martha, a second by Katie. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Great, thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is visitors. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address? Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward, please?
Lorraine Brew, Matic Street. Just very quickly, I wanted to thank the Harringtons and the Spinneys again for their very generous gift, but I also wanted to thank the school committee for how you were able to come together on Christmas Eve and do, make such a wonderful gift happen for the children in the town, so thank you personally.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Any other visitors this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have first the December 10th minutes. Do I have a motion on the December 10th minutes? Regular meeting. I have a motion by Kate, a second by Katie. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. How about the December 18th Special Policy Committee meeting? Motion by Katie, second by Kate. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Four in favor, zero opposed, one abstained. Beverly abstained.
And I think there has been a question about, which I think we should also clarify-
On the December 24th Special Emergency Meeting?
Right. Well, that I will, as my position as vice chair, sign these even though I was not president. That has been checked through legal counsel?
Yep.
Yes.
That's propensity right, but that is my duty.
You are certifying that the committee voted to approve the minutes?
That's what I am doing, yes.
So is there a motion to approve the December 24th Emergency Meeting minutes? There's a motion by Katie, second by Martha. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 4, 0, and 1. Thank you very much. Now, the next item is the second item of really good news tonight, and I would like to quickly read a letter that comes from the National Superintendent of the Year program. And it's addressed to Christopher H. Martis. By the way, what's the H stand for?
Henry.
Henry, okay.
Oh, good. I was worried you were going to say something else. Maybe we shouldn't have asked that question.
Congratulations on being named the 2008 Massachusetts Superintendent of the Year. You and your colleagues who have been selected state representatives in the National Superintendent of the Year program deserve outstanding recognition. During the second general session at the AASA National Conference on Education in Tampa, Florida, Friday, February 15, 2008, we hope to do just that. At this prestigious ceremony, each state finalist will walk onstage to be congratulated by Sarah Jerome, President of AASA, and a representative of the R Mark Education, our cosponsor. And then it describes some of the details of the meeting itself. We also invite you and your guests to a luncheon honoring the 2008 State Superintendent of the Year from 12 noon to 2 o'clock in the lobby patio of the Marriott Hotel. And they've attached to there a list of all of the winners from every one of the states. And as chairman, I would like to congratulate the superintendent. It is exciting to have someone in his first year be named Superintendent of the Year. It shows the brilliance of our hiring.
The community wanted a qualified person.
Frank, what happened? You got a small camera? You used to have that big one.
That's all right. I'm still the man I always was.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Chris, did you want to just share with people how this process works?
You may. Sure. It's fairly usual in Massachusetts, particularly and in many other states, since I know quite a bit about the program from a number of years, and I've actually attended this conference since I've been a superintendent and have had a chance to watch other of my colleagues, not only from Massachusetts, but around the country, receive this award. It's pretty typical in Massachusetts for the Superintendent's Association to nominate the president of the year, the president of the association. But that doesn't always, that person isn't always chosen because it has to go to a national program that is run by, as you mentioned, the AASA, the American Association of School Administrators, which is the national school superintendent association that I belong to. So it is, I had to submit a number of different documents and questionnaires and talk about my experiences in different places and all of that, so it was nice to receive that letter back. I would say that I was the, that I'm the Superintendent of the Year for 2008, so it's nice. As I said, I know my colleagues who have been involved in this program, and it really is a nice honor to be acknowledged by your colleagues. I don't know if there's anything better than that, actually, to be acknowledged by your colleagues and to be kind of vetted through a process at that national level. So it'll be fun to, they just happen to be having it in Tampa, Florida.
Right, in February.
It's not a bad thing. So I'm looking forward to that conference. So thank you, and thank you for-
Is that school vacation week or before school?
It's actually the Friday before school vacation is the ceremony, so I'll be heading down Wednesday night, it looks like, because Thursday's the first day of the conference.
Well, congratulations again.
Thanks, thank you.
All right. We are running a little bit ahead of schedule. Tonight in the budget overview, we have a review of art, athletics, music, physical education, and technology. And why don't we start with athletics? We will ask Craig to come up, and if Jerry joins us, we'll have him. If not, otherwise, we'll go right to Mr. Massey. So, and everybody should have their books. Where do you want us to start, Craig? Do you want to start the overview page or back in the detail?
Yeah, actually, what I'd like to do is I kind of put together a little bit of an outline. Just, I think it's important for me, since this is my first year, just to give a sense of where the department is and maybe just shed some light on what some of my philosophies are going forward. And I'm just going to go through this list, and then if you have questions after, you know, we can certainly do that then, if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
First of all, thanks for having me. You know, I think from my perspective, in terms of giving you an overview of the department, the most important decisions I feel like I'm going to be making are who we're hiring when we do have turnover in our coaching positions. And I know we've had some of those in the first two seasons so far. And just to give you an idea of what I'm looking for, there's five qualities that I try to highlight and look for in the coaches that we have. I know when I got started in coaching, the first thing, first lesson I learned was, you know, you don't get into this to win championships, you get into it to help kids. So the first thing we're looking for is somebody who's going to put the kids as their first priority. The second thing is that they have strong character. The third thing is that they have a good depth of knowledge as to what, you know, whatever sport it is that they're coaching, that they can teach it, that they're hard workers, that they're, you know, going to commit themselves to whatever they're doing and try to actually build the program. You know, the old saying is, you don't want to have someone roll on the balls and bats out there and just saying, go get them, but somebody who's actually going to take the time to build something. And that segues into the last thing, which is the stability factor. Somebody who's going to be here for a little while, I have a little bit longer view of it. I feel like if I have those five qualities in my coaches, that we're in great shape. And the hirings we've had so far are with ice hockey, boys' basketball, and softball going forward this spring, and they all have those kinds of qualities. So that's kind of, just in a nutshell, what I'm looking for and who we're hiring. I've said it before, the strength of your department is going to be the strength of your coaching staff. And, you know, that's kind of a skeleton of what we're trying to do. In terms of budget, I feel like we're in pretty good shape, you know, and I know I'm new. It's kind of a fresh set of eyes, you know, but I've had some experience, similar, a similar budget in my past experience. And the things that I'm going to try to do, you know, as the head of the department, are make sure that we're spending efficiently. You know, I don't want to get into a habit of rebuying things. The second thing is to make sure we're buying the necessities, the things that are instrumental in our coaches running their sports. And that's, you know, obviously, the necessary equipment, uniforms, and trying to stay away from the luxuries, which I'll get into a little bit later. And the third thing is taking careful inventory of the things that we do buy, tightening that up and making sure that we're storing it and keeping track of it. And I know there's been some discussion about uniforms. The experience I've had, it's what we've tried to do, what I've learned from, is putting things on a three-year cycle. And what I've tried to do is take an inventory of what we have, what we've bought, and what, you know, what the future holds, and getting us on a three-year cycle so that we're not in this, it's never lopsided, you know, from year to year. It's pretty balanced. I've put together a list here that I'll get to. I think we're in pretty good shape to date. I do. And I've looked at that stuff. Obviously, anybody would say that we need more, but I feel like we're in pretty good shape. And I think, I want to run our department first class. Nobody wants to see us running our kids out there in rags. We had a situation this year where our boys JV soccer team was kind of in that state. And what we did was, we went out and we, you know, I looked at their stuff, and it was in tatters, so we went out and got what they needed. And they, you know, got a good, I think for a thousand bucks, we got a good first-class set of JV boys soccer uniforms. That's not ideally how you'd like to be doing it. I think what I'd like to do is be buying that stuff for our varsity teams and then passing the other stuff down. And I know the next logical question would be, well, you know, how's a freshman going to wear that former varsity uniform? I think it's, you know, there are going to be times where there's a smaller kid or a bigger kid that doesn't necessarily fit into what you have, but it's easy to backfill that stuff if you put in place a system of buying the uniforms. I'm a very old-school, classic type of guy. Like, I want to have very simple, basic uniforms with high-quality material. There's times where you can get into triple tackle, twill, three-color, eight-color, and it's all over the road, and it's very hard to backfill that stuff. But if we have a simple set of uniforms from varsity to JV to freshmen, it's easier and much more affordable to backfill and buy one or two if you need to, to fill in the blanks, if you will. It's important to understand that each sport is very different. We have, just going down the line here, this year alone, we've bought field hockey uniforms, boys' JV soccer, girls' JV soccer, volleyball. We're in the process of buying softball uniforms. In fact, today, we were doing it. Football reconditions their stuff every year, and it's a very high-wear-and-tear sport, so, I mean, every year, you're buying 10, 12 new uniform tops, cheering, and wrestling. That's for just this year. Wrestling, we buy singlets for the kids every year. It's six or seven of them. That's not something that we issue and take back. Those are kept by the kids, and they usually use them for two or three years anyway. And, you know, golf is a sport where they buy their own golf shirts, but they choose to use their budget towards buying a higher-quality golf ball and getting more time in the practice range. So there's, you know, and there's other sports I know that have just started their programs, lacrosse, hockey, not in a year, but in the recent five years or so, six years. And, you know, those are also high-wear-and-tear sports where you have to kind of fill in the blanks each year. If you need two or three, you can go out and get them. I know, I talked about buying the necessities, and I think that's where it gets murky, is when you're talking about boosters clubs. You know, when we're trying to start a sport like hockey, like lacrosse, which takes some capital, you need to kind of rely on them to help you get it off the ground. But I think going forward, what I would like is not to put that burden on them. You know, once those things are bought and we get things off the ground, you know, we'd like to be inventorying it, making sure that it's up to snuff. You know, part of that is being able to fill in year to year, no You know, part of that is being able to fill in year to year, know what your needs are. So going forward, next year would be cross-country and track, which are very low-cost uniforms. Boys' basketball is the oldest set that we have. So that's a focus for next year. Boys' and girls' tennis. And then I mentioned lacrosse, boys' and girls' lacrosse. Being able to do, I think, you know, that's a sport where you're going to be doing some upgrades each year. In '09 and '10, we could go back, we'd be going back to girls' basketball, hockey and then baseball. And then after that year, we'd get on a track where we'd be on a cycle. The next year we'd begin a new cycle, you'd evaluate the stuff you have and then you'd have some sort of map as to, you know, what to do for that next year. You know, and I think even to go so far as to set up a meeting with our booster club president, sit down and get on the same page and just make sure that we're working together. And, you know, like I said, I don't want to be leaning on them to buy, you know, all the uniforms, but to get us off the ground. We talked about swimming, I know, in the past, but, you know, that would be something else that we would talk about in the future. In terms of my major goals, I look at, you know, the thing I want to do is try to create a dynamic athletic environment. And, you know, it's hard to do that, to be honest. We're spread out in a lot of different venues. And any way we can consolidate that would be a goal. And it gets into the whole locker room issue. We talked about a month or a month and a half ago about MRSA and things like that. And that was kind of the genesis of the whole locker room renovation. Right now, we have two programs in the IGO building in three rooms. The football team is in two rooms with one restroom and a shower facility that is not really functional. Across the hall, we have one office, one small restroom and a shower facility that's bigger and functioning. And the plan is to try to keep our football program under one roof. Instead of two coaching staffs, you've got Coach Martinelli, who was our longest-tenured, most decorated head coach, who can stay on top of everything going over there. And I know there's rising issues with parking and traffic and things like that around the IGO building. So that would be something that would be helpful. You have one staff of football coaches with seven or eight assistants that can really keep their thumb on that stuff. And really, you know, it's not a vented area. So the idea behind it was if you go in that locker room, the lockers are not vented, there's no ventilation in there. And that's where MRSA can breed. You know, trying to find a creative way to help them keep their gear off the ground so it can dry and get air at it. And that's where we started brainstorming ideas, some open locker situations that would help solve that problem. Now, there's a million different ways and directions you can go in. The numbers I put down here were just kind of a general ballpark. But, you know, I look at the athletic department as, and I use this analogy, but it's like Fenway Park. I want to, you know, we're not going to build a $600 million stadium. We want to pick something and try to work on it and the next year pick something else and try to work on it. Slowly, you kind of phase in a nice renovation. So that's kind of what's behind that idea. You know, we all want to upgrade our facilities, I think. You know, when I look at the, you know, the next phase, you know, turning our weight room into a true wellness center. You know, I know, I'm sure you've talked about turf fields in the past, but just those are things that, you know, down the road, I'd love to see become part of this athletic department. Because, you know, one of the major things I heard when I got here was, you know, we're fighting enrollment every year with Mansfield and Franklin and teams within our league. It's tough to compete with those kinds of numbers. And nobody wants to see our kids going, that are born and bred in Foxborough, leaving to go to Bishop Fiend and Zavarian and some of these other schools that have high-class facilities. And, you know, having been a recruiting coordinator for eight to 10 years in college, you know, I know the benefits of it. So our training staff, Amy Gilmet is outstanding. She's one part-time person and she's working with 300 athletes per season. So, you know, any way we can help her and keep her around, she's been a tremendous help. And I know there's been some discussion about the golf cart that we had in the past that helped mobilize her when we had, because she's so spread out. And I know there's some things in the works and trying to get that back in the mix for. Improving communication. I know I talked about, I talked about this, getting our website updated so that people can get information much easier in terms of directions, facilities, schedules, all that stuff up to date. And it's a plan that I had going into our summer and just making sure that we kind of launched a new information phase. Even to go so far as to get our medical process updated and on that website where they can download PDF files and have them at home. It just streamlined our medical process, which my plan next fall is to launch a new one. I've talked to a lot of ADs at a lot of different schools, not just our league, but other leagues, to try to cherry-pick some ideas of what they're doing with their medical process to make it better and streamline it. We've done two athletics nights, which have been pretty successful. I know the second one wasn't as successful as the first just because of the timing of it and the snowy night before the holidays. But I think they've been real successful, doing one more in the spring and I enjoy doing them. I think any way we can keep pounding that message home, making good decisions, the better. And we've had two professional athletes come in and talk to the kids, which I think, you know, gives them some cachet.
I'd just say that the coverage that I read in the newspaper on this last one was phenomenal. Really addressing the decision-making and that a bad decision haunts you for the rest of your life.
Right.
Whether it be steroids, whether it be drugs, whether it be alcohol. And so as a committee, we've talked lots about drug and alcohol. We've really stepped up in the last year. And I think that you've embraced our wishes more than any of us could have ever imagined. And the job you're doing, helping drive that home to all of our students, is very, very much appreciated.
Thanks. I'm a big believer in it and keep doing it. I think the next speaker will be, it won't be hard getting another speaker because the last one got called up to the Bruins the next day. I think we're on to something here. The last piece before I open up to questions is, you know, I'd like to start a Hall of Fame here. I know, I don't know if it's been something talked about in the past. We have, I know we've honored some athletes, but to do some sort of dinner in the future. And again, this is a brainstorming thing, I might be biting off more than I can chew today, tonight. But I think it's something I did while I was at Holy Cross, it was hugely successful. And any way you can honor your tradition, get people back to school and, you know, maybe make some funds out of it towards our athletic department, all the better. So any questions you have?
Well, Chris and I have actually had a conversation about that because my high school alumni does that.
Oh, really?
When I talked to Chris about it, he said to me that actually, we had one here at Foxborough and he's in the Hall of Fame for basketball. But it kind of just died to the lack of interest. So I would do whatever we could to help you get this started again because I think it's important to look for ways to celebrate the success of our athletes and our students. And we ought to be looking broader than just an athletic Hall of Fame. We ought to be looking across the school for how do we create a Hall of Fame for our students?
Right.
That are successful and is, you know, whether it be art or music or history. And as I said to Chris, I hope that we can come together in a very collective way and in a way to brainstorm how we might go about creating something that we can be really proud of. And one of the things that Chris and I talked about, since Jerry Roy is sitting here, using technology as well. So that if someone were to come in and they're waiting for an event, let's say they're waiting outside the auditorium for a music concert. If there is a way that they could see this Hall of Fame through a computer and maybe check someone who hasn't been here for 20 years or someone who just recently graduated and is in the Hall of Fame. We have some ways we could probably work with our students to help create a very interactive Hall of Fame that would allow our students to participate in creating the future Hall of Fame for us as well. So I'm hoping that we can take some of your energy and some of your ideas, get others across the high school to kind of work with us and figure out how do we make it as broad as possible.
Absolutely. Any way I can help. That's it for that part of it. Any questions you folks have about the budget in general? I know it's been, like I said, it's not something that I added or anything like that. I tried to do what I thought was pretty straightforward and, like I said, any questions you have?
Questions from the committee? Katie?
Well, I was very impressed with all the details. It really spells it out, black and white, you know, what we're purchasing, how much, how many. I think, again, your idea of getting into a cycle is wonderful and really impressed with all the ideas that you presented this evening.
Okay. Case?
Again, excellent presentation. Couple of questions. We had talked a year ago and it was presented that we want a plan to start the swimming team on a trial basis, I think it was in '09, and then to be in part of that Hockamuck League in 2010. I'm not here to decide whether or not, because it's not my decision, but I want to make sure if that's still our next number-one long-term priority. I know we've got a couple that are the weight room and the lockers, but I don't know if you've looked into that, the pricing, we've gone anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000. It was a big chunk of change depending on how it was done. So if that's the case, then I just want to make sure that we're all aware of it again and that that's still the direction we're moving towards. So that when there's a question about the surplus or there's a question that we need to get it on capital, whatever we need to do, that it doesn't, that we keep that in mind.
Right. It's actually, I did do my research on it. It's a low-cost sport. Basically, the fee, the Y would be zero. They wouldn't ask for any rental fee. They'd let us use the facility for free, which was real generous. The coach's salary would be based on winter track, which is about just under $4,000 or thereabouts. You know, there are some small dues, it's $200 for dues. The total package would be about $7,400. There are currently three teams in the league that don't have it, we're one of them. And, let me see, equipment's pretty basic. I mean, basically, it's $200 for league dues. Officials would be about $648. It's $54 for each official, there's two at each meet. You do about five or six home meets. You'd have event staff for these events, like a game administrator and people that can actually time the events. Transportation would be about, what is it, about $150 a meet, something like that. The small equipment is caps that we would buy. I know that most teams have their student athletes buy their own swimsuits and keep them, much like the wrestling singlets. And, you know, the other small stuff is stopwatches, your medical equipment, any kind of training supplies. So it's not a huge cost.
Is all of that for $7,400?
Yep.
That's awesome. So is it still the plan that will start for 2009 or is that still the plan?
Yeah, I mean, that, like I said, I think the big key here was the rental fee and I think that was a little unknown. And I got off the phone this week with the powers that be over there and they said they wouldn't be looking for any fee. They just have to sit down and work out the hours during the week of when we could get in there and get our swim time. I think the plan is that they want, they're giving us this luxury, but, you know, maybe down the road, if there's a way we can help them, then we will, whatever that is, I don't know, but.
There's quite a lot of Foxborough citizens who belong to the line, who contribute to the line, who have donated to the Capitol Drives.
Okay.
So it's wonderful to see the return.
Right.
Before you forged a habit of this, though, wouldn't you poll the student population to see if in fact there was a need for it?
Right. I mean, that's my thing, it's always been my thing, is that, you know, if we start a program, I want to make sure we can sustain it. I don't want to get into this where we do it for a year and then don't do it for two and then do it for another year. And, you know, to have the numbers be healthy enough that it sustains itself. You need, you know, you need 12 swimmers. You can make it a co-ed team if you have 12, 15.
That'll include the interest right there.
If you have 12 or 15, though, it's not something you need high numbers for, but you do need, you know, a dozen kids that are, you know, are active in it.
Have we had a dozen or more express interest?
So far, it's been kind of a smattering of people, but, you know, to reach out and actually do a sign-up, we could do that in a week, you know, or even tomorrow and get a sense and, you know, have a better feel for the exact numbers. And even coming up through eighth grade, I had some people, after the open house, approached me, two or three people, asking me about that very thing.
If you have any other question on the lockers, could you explain what you've decided to do, because I think that that's, and the cost of that? Because I know that's an item that's been priced a lot. And I want to make sure that we don't, that everyone knows what the number is, because we've heard anything from, again, 20 to 35.
Right. I did some research to go so far as to have someone come in and actually measure out the rooms and section off where all the lockers would go and, you know, from soup to nuts, do everything. I also had somebody, you know, price out the lockers that we would just buy individually and install ourselves. And I've talked to Mike O'Leary about this at length, just to bounce stuff off him, because obviously Mike is, he knows his stuff, so I want to, you know, rely on him. And we've also thought about an idea of having somebody in who could do something a little bit more bare-bones, where they're not, we're not bringing in lockers necessarily. The high-end thing is way out of our price range. I won't even mention it, it's not worth it. But the part of that plan is that he was doing three rooms at once and pricing those out, but also saying that he could break it down one room at a time and you could do them in increments. So an exorbitant figure, you know, you can do it for a much smaller figure, but it wouldn't be done in a year. The second plan was to buy the lockers, they're about $200 each. We'd need about 140, 150 of them and then we would install them ourselves. That's where the figure of $30,000 comes from. And in talking to Mike O'Leary, he thought that it would be about $5,000 of minor demolition work that we'd have to do in there. And really, the plan is to just, to make that area more space-friendly. There's a lot of wasted space, there's a lot of nooks and crannies that we could utilize and just make it a better environment for the kids. The last plan was, I know that there's, in talking with, I've talked to Paul and, you know, somebody who did some work on the schools for the, not the cabinets, but the countertops. He was very good in terms of woodworking and things like that. Could they come in and actually put something on the walls and slat it off so it was sectioned off and you could put your hooks on top of that, which would be a much lower cost? Even thinking about doing a trial of, you know, five or 10 of them, just to see how it would work. And at least it's moving in the right direction and have a place to hang their stuff up. Just trying to keep it off the floor. And, you know, it's sweaty stuff and, you know, want to make sure it dries out. So that was kind of the plan right now.
And my last question, if I may, I'm sorry to take some time. Turning the weight room into a wellness center, that's a conversation. We had the wellness policy, we talked about it a year ago. Keith Gibson and Kevin Murphy talked to us. I know we're still not there, it takes capital. Luckily, again, due to the Harringtons, some equipment that's been donated, we're still short on the space and it's a major project. Where would that fall in your timeline?
Well, I was thinking, I went in there this week and I looked it over and, I mean, I think you can make some very simple adjustments to that to make it, to make it better. Even as much, go so far as a coat of paint and just really, what's the word I'm looking for? Just trying to consolidate some of the stuff we have and some of the stuff that might be a little outdated and making better use of that space. I think as simple as that, you can make it better. I know we just bought a couple new treadmills, finding a way to keep those in one area as a cardio area and also making sure that they're working past the week. I know that that's the thing, is supervision, is making sure that, you know, that's, you're bringing that kind of equipment, that it's not getting, you know, banged on and beat up. Want the kids to respect the stuff that we're bringing in and treat it good. And, you know, that's just the supervision piece. But I think it's a small, those small adjustments right there, obviously, we'd love to put a wing on and expand it and put, you know, that goes without saying. But I do think that there's ways to, you know, make it nice, even, I mean, you look at my office. For those of you who haven't been in my office, the difference between a year ago and now is night and day and it's really just a coat of paint and just clearing some stuff out, so.
Anything else?
And I would like to thank what you're continuing and what you're boosting to the next level in terms of inventory management and purchasing cycle. And in addition to that, I really need to thank all of the booster groups who, up until this year, were actually supplying our uniforms, with the exception of football. The parents who came forth, not just with lacrosse, but basketball. And it's, at this point in time, it's been so great this year that we were able to finally, this is the first year the cheerleaders actually had uniforms, they didn't have to pay for themselves. So it was great that we were able to do that in the fall. You know, many of the groups are, the boosters are still going to continue to do what they need to do to help the students. I'd like to say thank you to those booster groups and thank you to you in continuing the effort of being both efficient and buying what's necessary and then the inventory management to keep that going. Because I think that will ensure, we had let uniforms go. We didn't have the money and thankfully, the boosters stepped forward and I think with the right management and putting a plan, both a purchasing plan and a management plan in place. in place, that will keep, that will keep us in good shape, so.
Thanks, Kate. Yep. I do, I think that that is, you know, just putting that cycle together, once it gets moving, it's going to solve a lot of problems and make it a much more, much smoother process.
Chris, you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to pick up on it, because I think it's an important point. You know, one of the things that I'm really pleased about is that, is we do have a plan for uniform replacement, because I think it was scattered. I think there was some booster purchases. I know from sport to sport, it didn't appear to me in talking to you, Craig, and looking kind of back on a little bit of our history, that, that we had that kind of, we need to do this this year, we need to replace, we need to drop those down, as you mentioned, from varsity to junior varsity to freshman. That wasn't consistent across the board.
Right.
And I think that's a part of this, that, so what budget money was going to what, I think is not as clear as this plan is.
Right.
So I think that's really the key to this, that making sure that we have, that we know where the money's going and it's efficiently spent.
We've bought, we've bought a lot of uniforms this year. I mean, it's more than you'd like and, but what you hope is that after this year and even next year, a little bit, we're, we just, it evens out. And that's, that's what we're hoping. That's what I expect, so.
Beverly, any questions? Martha?
No, I think it's a tremendous job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Craig. You're doing a great job.
May I just follow, I just want to re-clarify. The next, and I know it was on the extra list, it's not the budget, but we've talked about it for two budget cycles, the junior varsity girls cheerleading.
Right.
And that is the next team that you felt very strongly quoted should be fielded whenever we can bring in online, even before the swimming that we talked about.
Right.
Any thoughts? Is that still your?
Yeah. I mean, and I've talked to our coach. Right now, we carry 20 girls on the cheering team. And the plan would be to pare that down to 16 for varsity and then you'd have your JV team probably 12 or 14 girls. From talks with my coach and from talks with other people within the community, the interest is there. I know coming up through the ranks in eighth grade, there's a lot of girls, there's like a junior cheering team that is very active. So I think it's something that we could sustain. It's really pretty low money to have a salary for that coach and, you know, the uniforms that we just bought, we could put that plan in place of, you know, dropping the varsity, the old varsity uniforms down to JV. So you're not buying those. They're not traveling. I think that's what, you know, our coach had said was that, you know, they don't need to travel on the road, so there's no travel costs at cheer at home games. And it would just make them a stronger program. And it's, it's a program that's, I've been impressed with. It's, you know, they put a lot of time in and I know that, you know, our coach does a great job. So I think it would be a pretty easy, a pretty easy fix, you know.
In '06, it was originally thought it'd be about $2,500 and that would include basically the stipend.
Right.
They talk about uniforms, which bumped it to 4,500. Any idea of the actual cost?
Well, you know, in comparing our varsity salary with the other sports, the JV salary would be about $3,200. And I'm going off of last year's figures, not this year's figures, so Paul would probably have a more accurate figure there. But that's, that's about right. The basic cost of equipment, you know, some of the pom-poms and some of the music and things like that, they'll have all that from varsity and they'll be able to utilize it. Both of the teams will be able to utilize it. So that would be pretty much it, is just the salary itself and be able to share a lot of the equipment in terms of the old.
So about 4,500?
Yeah, I'd say.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. One of the things too, because of my experience with my daughter being on the cheerleading, just to make that known, is that the JV, too, would not be participating in competitions, which the varsity does, I'm assuming.
Right, yeah.
Or I don't know, maybe they would.
It's a league rule that they, it's a league bylaw where they don't allow JV teams to participate in competitions.
Okay.
Just because what they've, they've had it in the past where they're afraid that if they do it for one group, that it will open up a full indoors box for everybody else and you'll have JV competitions across the board. It's just, it's a league philosophy where they're trying to put the focus on varsity competition and then the sub-varsity levels are for development and participation and things like that.
Okay. Because that is, obviously adds to the cost.
Right.
Whereas the varsity booster club, for the cheerleaders, raise money for their competitions. Just to clarify something that Kate, that you brought up regarding the uniforms, my understanding, being a parent, is that I never paid for a uniform. What we paid for were the sweatsuits that the girls wore at the games. And I guess we could classify that as a uniform, but every cheerleader then keeps those. So I don't know how it works with other sports.
Right.
Again, those are purchased through the booster club and through parents.
Right.
The booster club did purchase both a set of blue and white and the parents paid for the, for the.
But you have to talk about the uniforms that they wear at the games, the tops and the skirts.
Right. This was the first year that we, that's what you had told me and the boosters told us that they, that was the first, this was the first year that that has been purchased.
The cheering uniforms?
The cheering uniforms.
Right.
The brand-new uniforms, the white.
Right. We bought those, right.
Right. This was the first year, the uniforms this year, the school.
But you didn't have to pay for your daughters?
No, we didn't pay for the tops and the bottoms in previous years, or last year.
The uniforms previously were.
The actual uniform, the sweatsuits we did. Unless you have.
Well, the boosters have paid for uniforms. I don't know, Mary Johnson's not here tonight. They were mentioning that, in fact, they have, they have a number of both white and blue uniforms that the junior varsity could have so that the varsity wouldn't have to, because only three are turning over on the varsity team.
Right.
So there are only going to be three slots. So to turn those uniforms over, you probably couldn't do that next year, but they have a set of both blue and white uniforms that the boosters, in fact, purchased and they have, those are still, those are, those were purchased by the boosters.
Okay, well, let's not deviate history.
Okay, well, okay. Just one other quick question. Regarding, you have those three items listed, Craig, on your wish list. And I was just wondering if they were in order. You have the locker room renovation, you have the JV cheerleading team, you have the part-time athletic secretary. Are they in any particular order?
No, I mean, the locker room renovation's my focus, you know, and the JV cheering, I think is, it's a no-brainer. I mean, it's a real easy, the whole secretary thing is more of a wish list than anything else. Within our league, it's, within our league, it's something that they all have, but it's not something that, you know, I'm pushing for or anything like that. It's just something I wanted to kind of throw out there as to, maybe down the road, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
If the locker room is a health concern, then I think it should be number one priority.
And Chris, you're working on it now.
Exactly.
They're looking at it, so they're looking at different alternatives and before the budget cycle closes, we'll have some definitive ideas. Okay.
Larry, there were a number of parents who, I don't know if, who want to ask questions about this athletic budget or maybe they're here for the art, I'm not sure, but we do have parents who are joining us this year.
Right. I saw them come in. And if they have a question, they can raise their hand and we'll recognize them. Yes, sir? Would you come up to the table?
Sure.
For a second? And just give us your name and address.
Ed Wayall, Love and Weperson Way, Foxborough. And I was just wondering, I haven't had a chance to talk with Craig, but as, very appreciative of what the school committee has done in the past to allow lacrosse. And as one of the folks who helped get the program started, we've, over the past several years, raised close to 90,000 for the first years to keep it going. And one of the things that we're thinking that we may need to look at is uniforms. We talked about it last year and we sort of deferred it. And in fairness to Craig, we haven't had a chance to talk to Craig about it, because we have a first board meeting coming up this, later this week. So just curious about the uniforms and how that is handled as part of the budget as far as, you know, for example, lacrosse.
What I would suggest is that you and Craig can meet offline. He can go to your meeting or whatever. We're not voting on a budget until the end of the month.
Okay.
And so Craig has the opportunity of coming back to us and making any recommended adjustments to what he earlier submitted. And so if he feels it's appropriate, then he would make the recommendation through the superintendent that we add it to the budget. And that will get into the deliberations that we'll take. We will have a public hearing on the budget on January 28th. At that time, at the end of that public hearing, we'll take a vote on that budget. So just work with Craig between now and then and he'll get the information back to us. And you're more than welcome to come back that evening and make a case on your own as well.
Great.
All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
All right. Not seeing any other hands, I'd like to move on now to Art. Jerry Roy is here.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jerry.
I wish I was here earlier. I just want a little clay and some tables and maybe a camera, that's.
Thanks, Jerry. Okay.
All right, sir. The four jaws.
It's pretty straightforward and pretty self-explanatory. I mean, you have all the, I believe, all the information in front of you. Basically, looking for level funding. I think, I think the biggest.
Jerry, is that what you're looking for or is that what you were told to look for?
No, that's basically what I'm looking for. I'm very satisfied.
Okay.
Especially with the increases we saw last year from your committee was wonderful. And as I said, last year, we hadn't seen an increase for quite a few years. And if you take a little time and you do your homework, you can make a dollar go a lot further. And that's what we try to do. We're a consumable-based department. We need to supply these young people with the materials they need to express themselves. And I think we do a very good job at supplying the young people of Foxborough with the materials they need to be creative in all, in all aspects. I think one thing that's difficult in some cases is if something occurs during the course of the year that you don't foresee, for instance, anytime children use equipment, there's going to be things that happen, breakage, so on. And those things need to be taken care of right away, whether it's a computer or a camera or a scanner or whatever it might be, a potter's wheel, those things need to be taken care of. And I take care of those things. And because I have the budget I have and the leadership we have here, I'm able to do that. And so at one instance, you, I might have in the budget, I want to have this item, but something occurs during the course of the year and there has to be that flexibility where you need to be able to fix or to purchase something with permission or with the okay of those people, the superintendent, be able to do those types of things so that the child doesn't sit there for two days or even a day without a computer or a potter's wheel or the ability to fire the clay and to have that product to them as soon as possible. So that's what we try to do also. And I think this budget addresses those types of needs. As we get better and better at things, the cost of items go up. So as years ago, we'd buy a $200 digital camera, now we're buying a $600, $700 digital camera, because the kids have the expertise now to use those types of things. Same thing with printers and computers. So as the technology increases or it gets better, we have to stay up with that, whether it be software or whether it be hardware. So that's what we're trying to address in this, in this budget.
Any questions, Martha?
No, I think we have an outstanding program and I certainly will always support it. And, you know, just a side note, I don't, I'm only one person on this committee, but if you've got things budgeted and something else breaks, that's unexpected. Come back to us, let somebody know, because maybe we can help in a different way. I don't want to see you compromise what you want versus, you know, if something unforeseen happens, that's unexpected and you just need to hear about it.
Well, that occurs, because I can go to Mr. Jackson, I can go to the superintendent and they have been more than generous and more than understanding about those types of things. And as long as the communication is there, I think, I think that solves a myriad of problems. As long as the people, you can go talk to somebody, whether they can come through with the money or not, they'll usually have an idea of where you can go and how you can get it done. And that's the nice thing about having good people on your team.
I mean, all we need to do is look around the school and the displays and what our students have achieved under your leadership and it's phenomenal, Jerry. You have an outstanding art program and I, for one, would never want something to happen to it. So you have my support.
Thank you.
I guess, just on that comment, Martha, you know, we heard earlier about Coach Martinelli. And we have some great coaches, no doubt about it, but we also have, you know, great, great department heads. And you look at what Jerry has done, you look at what Mr. Massey has done, you look at what Mr. Murphy has done. These are people, you know, you often hear complaints about teachers only work 40 weeks a year or 37 weeks a year, whatever, because they always have the summers off and they're out of work every day at 3:00. Well, these department heads give 60, 70, 80 hours a week to their kids. And what you hear from the three gentlemen that are sitting here, from the children, the students that work with these three gentlemen that are here, is they'll tell you that there's never been a time when they had a need, that one of these three gentlemen, one of these three department heads we're going to have from tonight, who didn't stay, whether it be a weekend, whether it be at night, whatever it happened to be. These are consumable professionals who just devote their lives to the students of Foxborough. And, you know, it's important for people to recognize that this school is part of their lives and these students are part of their lives. This isn't a job for them. This is, whether it's Coach Martinelli or these three gentlemen here, this is the passion of their life. Helping these students be successful and teaching them life skills is an absolute tremendous credit. And we have one that's going to be retiring at the end of the year, is going to be very, very missed by a lot of the kids, but we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge these department heads that are here tonight that have been here for a very long period of time and just continually devote hours and hours to the success of their students. So I want to recognize the three of you tonight.
Thank you.
You wanted to say something?
I think what you talked about earlier, about a Hall of Fame.
Yep.
And I think that's a wonderful idea. I have a student that, if you can Google her name and it comes up, and she's been written up in art news and all kinds of art magazines and is selling her work nationally and worldwide. That's the type of thing that, that just makes you feel good inside.
Absolutely.
And I have another student on the West Coast who lives in Venice, California, and is, works in the movie industry. And he's a storyboard artist. He went to school, around school design. A friend of his roommate created Family Guy and he wrote for years for Family Guy. And it wasn't his passion. His passion was to do storyboards for movies and that's what he's doing now in Venice, California. Another young man works for, I believe he works for Nissan and designs cars for Nissan, a very successful car designer. And when he was a senior or junior here at Foxborough High School, he told me, "I want to be a car designer and I will be a car designer." And he lived his dream. And those are the types of things. And I know Kevin Murphy has the same stories. I know Stephen has just a myriad of those types of stories. And that's what makes this worthwhile, to see those young people out there being successful.
That's why I personally would like the Hall of Fame to be beyond just sports. I would like it to encompass the entire student body. And I think that we have an opportunity to do that. I've also shared with the superintendent that I would like us to consider it both as a school committee but also working with our, with our teachers, that I think there should be a consideration for a teacher's Hall of Fame as well. And I think that there are so many teachers that have devoted their life to the students of Foxborough that we have to find a way to honor them as well. And I think that, you know, it's certainly not meant to be a popularity contest, and we'd have to work through lots of details. But I think it's about time that we pay tribute, not only to the students, but to the teachers that have made a difference here. And I know that we can get the funding outside of the budget. I know we can get the funding to make this happen and to recognize those teachers that are just tirelessly helping our students and those students that have gone on to great success in life should be recognized as well. So I'm hoping that over the next year, this committee will endorse it, and we can work with our teacher union and other professionals in order to make this dream a reality. Martha, you finish your, your questions?
Yep.
Kate?
I think art, athletics, and music are so critical to student achievement. So again, I'd just like to echo everything that you do.
Viv?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Let me just add, though, Jerry, that I, I know you didn't want to say it, so I'll say it. On the personnel side of the budget, what we did is we, what I call, create equity with our department heads. So we have a .4 department head position for that built into the budget, and that hasn't happened in a few years. And so, because I think not only do, is it important to make sure that the supplies and materials are adequate to continue to build the program, but we also may have to make sure that the human piece is there, that the leadership part is, continues to thrive. And I know that, uh, I, I know that Jerry already has ideas about things that, that he'll be able to do next year that he hadn't been able to do during the last few years because of the reductions. So I want the public to know that that's in the budget.
I think one other thing I'd like to mention is, is, and Craig mentioned it before, about the, about the web, and the high school webpage. I, with a student, designed and built the high school webpage, and now I maintain it, and now the student who did it is now working for the Foxborough Public Schools. I, I think there eventually needs to be some discussion about how that goes forward. And we've had some discussions about that, where that needs to go. Because as, as we grow, it, it's not a part-time little piece anymore. It's a, it's a huge piece with a huge amount of time commitment that needs to go with that to make it better than it is now. I think that the high school page and the district page, I think, is phenomenal. But, but I think we need to, to have that discussion in the future about where we go with that, because it ties into so much.
Chris and I have had that discussion, and I've encouraged him because of the number of criticisms we've had over the last year about information that's not current, that's not updated, things aren't linked together. So I've asked him, as part of his communication plan, to give some thought to how we make that happen. And as we're working through this year, to come back to us with his thoughts and ideas on how to make that even better than it is today. So I think you'll see that as, as part of his communication plan. He has a separate goal in objecting around communications, so. Thank you very much. Mr. Massey, you're next. Looking down for this evening?
Best I can.[740.28][740.57](laughter) A year ago, I came here and, and mentioned that I was concerned that instruments and equipment had, had no process for being purchased, that we sort of just tried to buy things out of our operational budget. The committee asked me to put together a, a plan, which I did, and gave you a five-to-10-year instrument purchase plan. And of course, in June, you gave the music department a rather large amount of money towards that plan. We actually purchased, I would say, about half of the five-to-10-year plan at one point. Because those five-to-10-year prices were list prices, and by making a substantial cash investment, we were able to get really good discounts. So my first statement is to commend you for, really, there's a committee that listened and responded, and thank you. We had gone 10-plus years without that kind of instrumental support. And so, besides the obvious, seeing kids playing quality musical instruments in, in a larger number than we had before, seeing the staff re-energized by having, you know, brand-new equipment to put in the hands of kids, it's, uh, it's great. It's great to witness that. And it's hard for maybe non-musicians to appreciate it, but one quick anecdote, we, we bought new timpani, those are kettle drums. And the kettle drums we had were, I'm saying, I'm guessing, 60 or 70 years old, and they were all right, student kettle drums. And so, for the 28 years I've been here, that's the sound that you've heard behind the band choruses and orchestra here at Foxborough High School. So we put these brand-new, really nice timpani in. They came in December, finally. We waited a long time. And we did our first little assembly performance here. And at least from my standpoint, and I asked the students about this too, I felt that the sound of our groups was totally transformed artistically by the presence of those instruments at the, at the, at the foundation. So when somebody says, "Is it worth it?" You know? It's only one instrument for, for one kid at a time. But it's a core sound that affects the entire organization for probably, those instruments will last 100 years. So when you think of it that, that, and the impact that artistically that has on the audience for 100 years, how good is that? And so I just wanted to commend the committee, because, like I say, I mentioned the problem, and basically you solved it. And I'm grateful, and so are the students. And continuing with that, then, the other half of those instruments, we need to look at over the next four to nine years in some sort of systematic fashion. And I don't see why this program can't be, you know, sustained at a high level indefinitely, because it's like an investment there. And when you make that kind of an investment in the arts, you say to the staff and students and community, "The arts are important." It's pretty much clear, so, thank you. The staffing, so the, the budget, actually, the operation budget's going down for next year because I don't have to try to buy expensive instruments under operations. It's a good situation in that regard. I'm, we have two young teachers with us this year, Mrs. Leona Pink and Mr. Donnie Albro. And when I looked around the music staff, myself included, I thought having some young teachers would probably be a pretty good idea.[981.92][981.92](laughter) And I'm really happy with the work they're doing. They're dynamite young teachers and people. And I'm investing a lot of my own personal time in mentoring them and in developing them, so that the Foxborough Music Department is going to have longevity, because we're going to have new teachers being developed. With that in mind, I'd like to make Donnie, who's a .9 teacher, a 1/0 next year, and use that 1/10th to, to come to high school first period and work with me in the band. I need the help. We have a lot of kids. But I also think I want to mentor him and develop him as a, as one of our important future employees. So that, that's a, sort of a staffing suggestion that I'm making. I think it would be a very wise investment. And I don't want to keep a, a young, talented teacher at a .9 for too long.
No. No, you lose them. You're losing them.
So that would be my recommendation. In, in terms of staffing, I think that would make a, be a smart investment in a relatively economic situation. Are there other questions?
I would just say to you that I know that when Leslie left last year, people in town were quite disappointed that her husband took a job in California. A year later, she followed him. And people talked about, what were you going to do? Because how could you replace her? And from what I can gather, you didn't replace her. You brought a different person in who was brought an entirely different approach, different level of energy. And so, not in comparing the two of them, but you've brought in, from what I can gather, a very talented individual who brings tremendous amount of energy and enthusiasm. And the feedback we had from the Christmas concert was just fabulous. And so, you have done a great job of bringing in some new talent into the organization that hopefully we are going to continue to stimulate and will be here for many years to come and help to continue the legacy long after you've decided to.
Yeah, well, I think it's, it's a smart approach. And, yeah, we all loved Leslie Geisinger, and so we knew right away she wasn't going to be replaceable.
No.
Great teachers are not really replaceable. So we, we need to bring in someone else and move in a, in a different direction. And Leona is doing great work. She's a superb young teacher.
Questions, Kate?
All right, thank you. Set it off.
Okay, Deb?
Thank you.
Katie?
Just the one, just one question. There's a .2 added to the elementary, is that right?
Well, yeah. I, I just talked with Chris. My biggest concern, I don't know if I discussed this with you last year, about our whole program, is I don't think we do enough for our kids in music really cater for. I think that's where we spend the least time, the least money, and the least staff, on the kids who probably instinctively are going to enjoy music the most. So I'm talking with Chris about trying to find ways to increase the opportunities for musical experiences, including maybe kindergarten and preschool. So we're in a discussion stages, but that's what, I, I really think that's an area, I don't want to say weakness, I, I think it's an area that we could definitely improve in.
We call them opportunities.
Well, yeah, I think, I think...
We don't have weaknesses, we just have opportunities.
Well, I think we're, we're staffing our middle school musically quite well and doing some superb work. I think due to many time constraints also that exist at the elementary school, we're not yet giving the students what I would consider a state-of-the-art musical opportunity, even though the teachers are working very hard, a short amount of time. So it's a, it's an issue that we've discussed and probably continue to discuss.
Right, Chris.
And it does leave a little bit to full-day kindergarten and something else we'll talk about later. But we want to hold it in the budget now, just to see what, what the whole thing looks like. Because I think you're right. It's, it's, it's an area that we, that we could improve on.
And that is in the budget. It's not on the budget. Because I think that's important. We talk about our math scores all the time. We know that there's a correlation between math and, and music. So again, art, athletics, and music all support student achievement. You can't have one without the others.
So we're going to look for ways to, to do that. This year, for example, at IGO, one of our teachers had enough periods so that she offered to do a, during recess, so it didn't impact any, a fourth-grade chorus, which ultimately... And they ended up rehearsing for a number of weeks and finally doing a performance. So that type of expanded opportunity for kids in music at the younger grades level, to me, is definitely a direction we should look at.
Thank you for speaking to that, because I think as we're discussing this, we need to, you know, let people at home hear about this, so.
Absolutely. Martha?
Outstanding program.
Yeah, high school bands get a decent amount of press, but what goes on with music and first graders is as important to me personally. Because generally speaking, children develop their affective attitudes towards music by age eight. By age eight, they've pretty much decided whether music's going to be an important part of their life. So whatever we want to do with them past age eight, whether that be singing, or playing instruments, or dancing, or making music in any fashion, in many ways is going to be determined by what we do with them before age eight, unless their family is providing that kind of experience for them, and some families are. So that's, to me, why what we do, including with kindergarten and preschool kids, musical opportunities we give them are going to be crucial for the ultimate success of music at, at a later stand. I don't think music is the only discipline, by the way, that that's true for, but...
I think that one of the issues that, when we look at sports, they often start by six, seven, eight, nine, whether it be Papua or whether it be Little League. When you look at music, you know, you've controlled the program from the earliest of ages all the way through. And what Chris and I have talked about from time to time is that when you look at the success of sports and you look at the success of music, we need to look at some of those attributes and say, "How do we apply that to history, or math, or English?" And are there some successes by controlling the program from grade one to 12, as opposed to it's an elementary program, it's a middle school program, it's a high school program? Are there ways that we can learn from the successes of sports, or music, or things? And so hopefully, we'll explore those. But I think the other thing that's helpful is you have two assistants that work with you in, in the middle school, I think, and the elementary school. And how many years of service do they have with Foxborough?
Well, Mr. Haggett, he's got over, I think, over 30 years.
Over 30 years with the, with the times in this program.
Mr. Murphy, it's over 20. And so, you know, that, we're old.[1430.42][1430.57](laughter)
That wasn't the point.
What can I say?
You have a team, you have a team of very seasoned and experienced people that work together.
That's incredible.
And, and at the middle school, how many years' experience?
Well, the, those same two people, and then we have Mary Ellen Dejolay as a string teacher, plus 70 years of experience, and, and...
But George Murphy's been with us how long?
Over 20 years.
Over 20. That's 57, 58 years, right there.
And then if you include your Steve's, 28, you know? I mean, that, it just, it talks to the, the consistency in the program when you have consistency in people, when you have consistency in, in the program. It's just a tribute to, to you and your staff. And I think, as I said earlier, you know, sitting to your right is someone who's going to be retiring this year. And it's, you just can't replace people that have given their life to the, to the community. And music is a good example of that. You've got lots of people in that program now that have devoted their life to the students of Foxborough.
Yeah, that's true. And I think, I agree with you that, that teaching, when you're committed... I'm not, when you're committed to music teaching, that's sort of one commitment. When you're committed to a specific music program and the longevity of that program, it's kind of a different level of commitment. And, and that's the nature of my commitment. And then I've been fortunate enough to be able to surround myself with teachers with that same commitment. So there, there are people that are not just passionate about kids and music, but they're passionate about kids and music in the Foxborough Music Program. So they're, they're not going from town to town for, to pick up and, you know, a slight increase in pay next year and then go to here for five, you know what I'm saying?
That's right.
They're not sort of taking the, sort of, the track to success. They're, they're, in some cases, working for less money at, at times in, in a town like this, as opposed to some larger, less paying towns, because they're committed to the program. And of course, the program gives you tremendous rewards. And that's why I say, when you have quality instruments, for example, and you're a music teacher, it's, it's really important to your work. Because the quality of the work is just... Danny knows, Danny's in the band. He was there the first day we heard these timpani. And we all went, "What is this?" "What is the depth and sound that we're hearing?"
Is this what we should have sounded like?
You can see it in your eyes, as you describe the excitement in the last couple of years of this music program. So thank you very much.
So we had 100 year drums. We're, we're, we don't have quite 100 years of wonderful experience, but, so should we take that opportunity to lock them into a 100-year contract?[1603.47][1603.47](laughter)
Steve, you've got to work to your 100. Thank you very much. All right, next is physical education. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Good evening. I know you have a long meeting tonight, so I'm not going to tell any stories.[1625.04][1625.04](laughter) Jerry took care of that. And as Steve mentioned, he's trying to save on salaries. I'm helping on that, hopefully.[1635.11][1635.11](laughter) I want to thank the committee, the administration, especially business manager, Paul Jackson, for his help over the years with my budget. I'm not complaining. I've had increases over the last few years where I needed money. And I have no complaints. Getting a couple treadmills for the price, I thought I was getting one. And that's due to, you know, your help with $2,500 for equipment. That's it. Basically, everything else is, we've had increases for maps as well and some small pieces of equipment. I have a staff of 11 that I want to thank for all their years of hard work. It's an older staff in certain places. Up here at the high school, Jack Martinelli's, was here a couple of years before me. So he's at least 25 or 26 years. At the middle school, Steve Sacetti has been around here as long as Kay Naylor.
They've been for a number of years.
I think so.
In the 40s, we don't mention...
So I have a staff of 11. At the high school, there's four, five with our home ec. program. And we've had increases over that in the last couple of years. Thank you, Paul. We needed stoves and some other equipment, refrigerator. We've been able to get those. The numbers have increased in that program. There is a slight increase for next year of $600 for books for the life, life course, life skills course, because of the increase in enrollment. And I think that's a very important course for the kids. So thank you again for that.
That's a good kind of increase.
Questions, Beverly? Kate?
I'm all ready.
Martha?
No. Thank you for all you've done.
I've got the one question. Your note at the bottom of your, of your page, which talks about additional staffing for the future.
For the future.
And you did say that there, presently, there are times when there are two, three classes in the gym at once with 80 to 90 students. So I guess what I'd like to ask you is, what kind of staffing would you like in the future? And again, talking about wanting to incorporate the more wellness into, into the program.
Right. We would like to increase the, the wellness program that we had, you know, quite a few years ago, where we had... ago, where we had three times a cycle for wellness, and we had, well, health was called then, and three times a cycle for physical education. At least for the ninth and 10th grade, where it's mandatory. Talking to Jeff, I think he's looking at, not for next year, but maybe the year after that, and we're going to try to get the program rolling, increase of a person, maybe one person that could do ninth and 10th grade health, and also help out in the gym, so we could expand that schedule to cut the numbers down.
I think that's important as we're talking about art and music and wellness.
I also would ask the school committee, in recognition of your retirement, to give you a standing ovation.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
You've done a tremendous job.
Been a pleasure working here for the last 24 years, and I'm going to miss it.
Still time to change your mind if you'd like.
That's right.
We've had others change their minds.
If you want to compete with the other numbers that we've been hearing this evening, you know, we can...
I haven't signed anything yet.
Know that whatever your decision is, we support it. And we wish you the very, very best beyond this year. You've done a tremendous job for the students of Foxborough. And there will be people 25 years from today, 20 years from today, remembering the things you did for them. And there's not much more than anyone can do in terms of leaving a legacy than to have students remember what you did for them 10, 20 years later, 30 years later. And there'll be many students that remember the things you've done for them. On their behalf, we thank you very much.
Well, thank you, it's been my pleasure.
Okay, the last item tonight is technology, Mr. Guadalati.
Do we create places? You say it, I'll go. Just kidding, just kidding. This wasn't included in the whole presentation.
Do you have copies for the audience, too?
Yes, I actually, already.
All right.
Try to stay a step ahead, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Trying, trying.
Trying all at once, stay a step ahead.
Oh, I feel like, I feel like one of the bookends tonight, Steve and Jerry and Kevin, with Craig on the front end and me in the back, being newbies in the system relatively speaking, although really, you know, to listen to them speak and to listen, you know, just the stories about them and watch them in action makes me proud of being front of Foxborough. And, you know, hopefully I can just put the same effort into the technology pieces they have. Chris, congratulations on the number one. I'm bringing that up because we have a little bit of number one in my family, where my young son, Brian, fifth grader at the Ahern, is the team, the select team that he plays for up in Fort, out of Fort Devon Soccer, was recently polled as the number one under-11 team in the state of Massachusetts. So I felt real camaraderie, as I was watching the announcement at home on television as I was eating my pot roast. And so that put my wife at number one for tonight. I still don't know where I'm at, or any ratings, I've got a long way to go to be number one.
Well, you've made a tremendous difference in the time you've been here. I think this committee remembers when the email was down for weeks and we had viruses every place, and nothing seemed to work. And you've brought a sense of order to a chaotic environment. So you and your team should feel very proud of what you've been able to accomplish.
I appreciate that, and I know on behalf of the team, they appreciate it as well. And I appreciate them every day. Basically, what I've given to you in addition tonight is under the mandate of being brief, which is a challenge in this area. Now, it's a challenge because there's so much going on, and there's so many things you want to talk about when you get the opportunity and you feel you need to talk about, because a lot of it's under the covers, a lot of it's behind the scenes. And so it is, it is a challenge. And perhaps at some point, you know, we can arrange to have some other nights where we, you know, schedule some different types of discussions.
More than happy to share to schedule you for any evening that you want to just work with Chris, and we'll put you on the agenda for an update. What you do is so important, we need to keep up to speed on that, and so we'd love to hear from you on that.
Appreciate it, thank you. Based on, you know, what was, I believe, is close to a level funding request, and the same model that we've worked with in the first two years of me being on board, where we relied also heavily on the capital improvement piece of budgeting, I'd like to just quickly discuss this kind of laundry list in terms of, you know, what we did during FY '07, what we're currently working on in, you know, '08, and the focus will be on the discussions of what I anticipate our activities will be in the '09. And if you look in the second page, I've actually gone out to '10. The items that you see in front of you will be part of the posted technology plan. That is an area that I have been extremely tardy in, and for that I apologize, in terms of having that document put together and updated. And so this will, this work that you see in front of you will be part of that plan in terms of what is currently going on and what I foresee our plans are and in discussions with the administration, and obviously with the support of the school committee. The items under FY '07, we talked about in great detail last time I was here, talking before you were in the budget. I just have them itemized because basically they're constants, and we don't want to take any steps back. And we need to continue those types of activities as we move through each year. Just quickly to touch upon, you know, aligning technology staff skill sets, stabilizing the current infrastructure. Back on the staff, basically, we just, we restructured the department and filled the vacancies, and that's made all the difference in the world. And I can leap right down to the improved service level, that's a direct result of having the full staff and a talented staff on hand to work for the district. Moving into 2008, and I'll take any questions on any of these items as I wrap up. Basically, what we're currently working on, as we all know, a lot of time and effort has been put into the new student information system, where we've implemented Power School to manage the district data. We've also, again, the upgrade and replacement of the current gradebook software, which is referred to as Power Teacher. A lot of time and effort has been put in there, particularly on the change management side of it. In other words, helping the users maneuver through the change. And you're going to see that as a little theme as I talk quickly tonight. Redesigning and expanding the server infrastructure, where we've purchased five servers, one for each building, and are currently handling backup responsibilities, and will move to restructure some of the applications that are running there as well. Continued desktop hardware replacement, which has been a big piece of, for us, with the capital improvement funding. We're on tap this year to replace approximately 200 workstations that will involve the borrow in IGO. Last year, we did the tailor in the high school and administration, so we hope to have another two buildings completed at the completion of this year, which will leave us the Ahern School as we move into '09. We're working to improve the network infrastructure. The new news here is, it should be public, again, is the new fiber network, which is going to be the backbone of what we're going to be capable of doing in the district. It is a vital project that we're hoping will be physically complete by the end of this month. It has gotten a little bit behind schedule. There were some contract issues in terms of the statement of work, those things have been, hopefully have been ironed out. And we hope to have the vendor, it's the same vendor that put in place the fiber network piece for the stadium and the public safety building, so we'll have some consistency there. It's the same vendor that will be laying the fiber network. And all five school buildings will be connected to the fiber. There was initially in the project, because of the costs associated with running the length for the spur or the parallel connection down to the borrow school, that there was talk that that was not going to be on the fiber, and we were going to use some other technology for that connection. But since the public safety building was part of the connection, excuse me, the Gillette was part of the public safety outlay, then the costs have been recovered so that we could connect the borrow as well, so that's good news. What will come with that, however, is we're going to have to begin to look internally at our building infrastructure, which I refer to as the LAN or your local area network. Those switches on hardware is anywhere from eight to 10 to 12 years old. We have to begin to start looking at that as the town begins to move forward with some other projects. For example, with the fiber, will come the capability of moving to voice-over IP for your telephone, and we'll need to make some adjustments there hardware-wise. And obviously, we would dovetail that with any initiatives that are taken on by the town, and hopefully be able to leverage that, those costs. We assisted with the implementation of the Connect Ed by basically providing the basic upload of telephone numbers, and we're looking to improve that and expand upon that. We've added the capability, the data buckets, if you will, into the student information system for additional information in terms of multiple phone numbers, email addresses, and whatnot. And we hope, in working with Chris and Connect Ed, that we'll be able to expand its functionality for notification in emergencies. Assisted with the install and deployment of the new financial system. We basically worked hard with Mike Mackey at the town hall, we established a network connection with the town, first time for this district, for the town, where we have connectivity between the town and the schools. And we provided the location for the servers, and the training facility is at the IGO building presently. Continued website review and redesign, I know that Jerry brought this up, and it's been, and Larry mentioned that as part, it's going to be part of Dr. Martin's communication initiative. We are working, we have a redesign, we have a server built, we have some things installed on that server with the plan to host our own website as opposed to pay someone else to do it. But it's waiting in the wings because the fiber network is so important for that initiative. We work hard to continue the software inventory procedures and documentation. It's a challenge, it always seems to take a second seat to other priorities. We're continuing with necessary software license upgrades. What will become the most evident is Office 2007. We're presently using Office 2000 in the district. We're now into 2008. We're a year into the release of 2007, so we're hoping through some timely purchases, presently we own 300 licenses of Office 2007. We're on target to purchase another 300 this year. Hopefully, we'll get another 300 next year, and we'll be able to outfit the district with Office 2007. So that will be something that will be dependent upon multiple-year funding. We're working on monitoring our network and improving the security. We've upgraded hardware and software. We've continued the rollout on the virus. We've purchased and installed, we're looking to purchase and install asset management software. This software will greatly help us to determine what is being used in the district currently, both software and hardware. It will help us greatly when we take a look at the Ahern School, where we have 578, at last count, computers, that's by far the highest number of any of the buildings. I believe 300 of those are in classrooms. And we need to determine how they are being used and review as to whether we continue with a traditional desktop model, or we look at other classroom technology alternatives. So that type of software will be very important in terms of helping us to determine that, as well as help us to more efficiently roll out new software and repair damaged workstations. And I mentioned reviewing current classroom technologies, that we'll begin with a focus on the Ahern. And that's all activity, that's planned to be completed at the end of this current fiscal year. Moving into 2009, we're on slate for, to begin replacement of hardware at the Ahern School for the faculty and hopefully the student labs, which will be, which currently numbers 233 workstations. And we would hope to, again, have that funded through capital improvement. We are going to continue to improve the network infrastructure. Where we need to review and plan for future network needs, as I indicated, particularly looking at our internal networks now. We are going to look to implement Power Teacher, again, which is the gradebook and attendance piece of Power School, the attendance piece only for the elementary schools. That's what we will be looking to implement during '09. As far as additional Power School needs for the district, we will begin to plan for future student-parent access. That's going to involve, as I've indicated before in Power School presentation, research in terms of how other districts have handled that rollout, and very detailed planning for training. We have, as part of Power School, a module that's referred to as Power Lunch. We're hoping that we'll begin to plan its implementation and rollout that will occur in 2010. We will continue with redesign of our server infrastructure. We have, now we have the hardware, we now need to reorganize where our files and data are kept, do away with our current roaming user profile infrastructure, which adds costly time to users' logons, and establish district-wide shares. Corporate drives, we refer to them in the private sector, we will have district drives where our data is centrally located, we'll be able to collapse our data, again, this is dependent on our fiber network, so that we can then share it out from one location. That will be a tremendous savings in terms of disk infrastructure and other aspects of the infrastructure. Let's see, okay. As far as our network security, the fiber network will allow us, in another area, to collapse our infrastructure. We currently have a firewall on every building in the expense to maintain that security. We are hoping through joint planning with the town that our internet access will be centralized with redundancy, but will be centralized, will be able to increase the bandwidth dramatically to help with learning distance initiatives, video streaming, things that they're looking to have happen in the classroom that our current infrastructure can't, are close to support. Where, again, based on the, you know, all based on the new fiber network, we'll be consolidating that infrastructure, looking to do that during '09. Review internal and external information sharing. This is kind of a very generalized area, but it could include things such as how we leverage our student information data and use it with other applications, such as the student nursing application. It could involve revisiting email in terms of the present system that we're using now, and also could include looking at parent-teacher student communications and data transfer, trying to make it easier for information to be transferred from outside of the school into the school. Files that involve homework for students, trying to set up a nice, user-friendly, easy way to do that. We'll begin to review that process during '09, not implement it. And the, moving on to the second page on your copy, these last four bullets really focus on this area that I like, I like to refer to as change management. Unfortunately for the district, in the way that the student information system was rolled out, it was pretty much force-fed upon the end-users. We were in a dire need in terms of the technology to replace it for licensing needs, and it was outdated, and it became, it was a very difficult task to manage that change with the staff. I would like to begin, moving forward, with any of the changes that we implement technology-wise, to make every effort to manage that change and make it more palatable and easier for the users. There are so many things on the plate, and if we just keep coming at them with, this is going to change, and this is going to change, and this is going to change, it's going to be completely overwhelming. So we need to focus on that area with respect to the change management. And that involves, again, our ability to assist educators with obtaining new technologies in classroom, same for the administrative staff, assisting them with new technologies, helping to build peer support and improve this change management process that I indicate. And at the same time, review the current classroom technologies. And quickly to close, as I look at 2010, down towards the bottom, an area that will really assist us will be if we can begin considering an additional technology integration specialist, or some focus in that area within the department. It would greatly assist in this area. Right now, I have one terrific person, but it's just one person, and the needs are overwhelming. And that's all I have.
Great. Martha, questions? Kate?
Just one. What's Power Lunch again?
Paul, it's kind of like a cash register, it would be an ability, the ability to, for the lunch staff to manage the funds, attract the student accounts, and it would be like a cash register.
Prepaid lunch.
Prepaid lunch, yes, correct. So I guess maybe cash register's not the right terminology to use. And it would involve using, using normal computers, I believe, and perhaps a touchscreen.
Thank you.
And it's part of the currently purchased software, so there's no additional purchase or licensing requirements for the software, it's something we already own.
Kate?
Just out of curiosity, on '08, when you said, Paul, you were reviewing the current classroom technologies, and you gave the example of, you'll start with the Ahern. Why the Ahern, how did you come to pick, I'm just curious how your team came to pick the Ahern versus starting at the high school or the elementary schools?
For the simple reason of the number of workstations, and we have yet to confirm their use in terms of how much those workstations are actually being used. They're the last piece of the machines that we got up and running after the... They're the last piece of the machines that we got up and running after the problems we had two years ago and it's a daunting area, the Ahern School. It was, it's the newest technology, it was the newest technology when we came on board. It's now the oldest, quickly has become the oldest technology. In theory, it was the most used, but we haven't confirmed that in the classroom. We know that obviously the faculty machines are being used, we know that the labs are being used. So that's why I mentioned that we, that would be a place to, if we don't have to purchase 300 and something workstations for the classroom, if there's another way to do it, that would better.
The greatest way to return is on the Ahern.
Absolutely, yes. There you go.
I knew you'd be able to straighten me out on that.
Something like that. You straighten yourself out. That's exactly what it would be. You know, trying to leverage, leverage different technologies, whether it's, again, the traditional desktop or we looked at the thin client or some way to have an instructor machine and then seven keyboards and monitors that connect to that instructor machine. If that makes more sense and is economically more feasible and we still get a good return in terms of technology in the classroom, then that's, I would prefer to switch the model.
Absolutely, because the buying cycle that you and Paul Jackson, and this is another area I think we need to showcase, that we're not stretching that to eight and six, we're right at the six and we're, but most importantly, you're also looking at the efficiency and use of the, of the classroom technologies, so that makes a lot of sense. My only other question for you, do you have everything that you need? You don't need anything else until 2010 on the, in terms of that integration specialist?
That's a loaded question.
I know, but it's rather, you're an additional technological integration specialist.
You know, have done so much and you've brought us light years ahead and the fact that you've done that in two years, I mean, we all know what was going on and I'm surprised that we actually got you to stay after your first week with everything that happened. So the question for you, do we have, do you have everything that you need?
Presently with the staff and how hardworking they are and skilled, we're able to accomplish a lot of the things that have been listed, you know, in-house. There might be additional requests should we have needed to go outside for that assistance. So we have, you know, the budget support there in terms of staffing and I think that's important to maintain for this year and then maybe in the, for '09 and then, you know, hopefully maybe in '10, look to maybe reallocate resources with regards to that. But, yes.
As Martha said to, I think, Jerry Roy earlier tonight, you need to know that if during the year you have a need that wasn't anticipated, to feel free to come back to us as a committee and bring the need to us. I know how easy it is to get stuff through Mr. Jackson. So you will write by past Mr. Jackson, write to us.
I don't give him all the credit. I'm very thankful. I'll echo Jerry's comments as well, very, very, and Steve's and Kevin's, you know, very thankful for the support that you have provided for technology in the town. It makes me feel proud to have that support and it's an excellent motivation for myself and the staff to continue to plug away. Yes, we have come a great distance from where we were, but where we were was so far down that we've got, we've still got a long way to go.
Right, absolutely.
And, you know, and I haven't, I haven't forgotten that as well, so.
And the fact that you're sharing those efficiencies also with the town as we look down the road towards the future, I think that speaks volumes and, you know, we've been able to thank you and acknowledge both you, Paul, and your team and I think we're also, just to acknowledge Paul Jackson as well, because he brought you here and kept your team going and you're both are having great impact on this process.
Okay, all right, we'll thank, we'll thank Paul. Thank you, Paul.
I did tell him he was getting a low-funded budget, not to bother bringing anything else to the table.
If you asked me the question, was I full of soul, yes, I was.
But what you all do is so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Paul. You did a great job and continue. Make sure your staff knows how much we appreciate how far they've come and what they've done for us. And I think that what's important from my perspective is that it's easy to get back to where we were if we're not careful. And that as we get into the next six months, it's going to be very important for you to come back and present to this committee kind of a long-range plan for, from an innovation technology standpoint, hardware, software, people, because it isn't, as you know, it's not like a business where we just decide today, okay, that's got a cost benefit, let's just go and do it. There's often alternatives that we have to look for in terms of funding. So I think that the sooner that we as a committee can understand the needs going forward from a technology viewpoint, the easier it is for us to start to think about where do we find those funds? How do we find those funds? Are they inside or outside? And how do we provide the support that you need? So I would ask you to work with Paul, to sometime in the next three or four months, come back and let's have, you know, a 30 to 60-minute discussion on your strategy and where you are, where you need to get to and one of the things that we need to do. I would caution you to try to keep it as close to English as possible so that not only we as a committee can understand it, but those at home can understand it. And I know that that isn't always easy, but doing that will certainly help us be an advocate for you in terms of the resources that you need. All right?
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
Thanks.
We're running just a few minutes ahead of schedule. The next item on the agenda is the report of students attending private, rural, locational technical schools as well as students that are at home, school. So, Chris?
Thank you. As the committee can see, and I know that we have this public document, we have a number of different schools in the area that students have attended and some continuing to attend. And I know that the committee each year reviews this and you've had it in your packet. Obviously the larger areas would be high school level Bishop Fian and Zavarian High School, the two places. Southeast and Regional attract some of our students from the eighth grade into the ninth grade. The charter school initially, and then you could see some drop-off in the upper grade levels that I think has been fairly consistent. I was able to review this document and the last couple of years and it's fairly consistent. One of the things that I will note is that a number this year compared to last year are up 12 students, but part of that is that we just found out that we have some students attending the Wheeler School in Rhode Island and we have eight students that are attending that. That just came to us, that we just found that out. This isn't something that's self, necessarily self-reported. We see this as, as students move usually from us to somewhere else or register for kindergarten and then decide, we have them on our list of potential kindergarten students and decide to attend somewhere else. So the numbers seem to be fairly consistent over the years. I think that, you know, we, as I have said, in other districts where I've, where I've worked, I want people to be informed consumers, which means I want them to know about the Foxborough Public Schools and then make decisions from there based on their own children, their own family, their own style. We will also, as we see students and families deciding to make other decisions, we will do some exit interviewing with students that we presently have in the system to try to find out if there's any pattern or any issues that we see that may have presented themselves at any of our schools that students have decided to attend another, another school. But as I said in reviewing this, it's fairly consistent. We still could, this has been built from talking to Wendy and others over the last couple of weeks. This has been built over the years and I think our data continues to be better as we, as we move along, so. If there's any more questions.
Just a question if I may?
Go ahead.
On Wheeler, Wheeler has both, and this would be out of district, but are those a private place that's paid for by the individuals? They also have a special needs component for, so do we know, are these, are we paying for these or these are?
No, the ones that we, the ones that we would pay for, we would, we would know. And those, those ones would.
Because Wheeler does both, that's why I asked the question.
Right, no, that's not on this chart.
Okay. Do you, my only other question, Dr. Marth, and I'm thrilled with the idea of the survey. I know we've talked about you having opportunity to survey parents, but just to have a check-in, it's January, we have loaded up your plate. So is that still something that will be doable in the spring? Do we need to make any adjustments to accommodate you? Because I think it's so important and the time to do, you know, what made you decide to leave? What would bring you back to Foxborough to collect that? There's such an array of data. We've got the kindergarten group, we've got the group that go to the choose, for whatever reasons, to go to the charter school and we have then the high school group. So it, I think that survey will be very important to building that foundation for the future. I just want to make sure, I'm mindful of the fact that we have all those goals we gave you, we have our goals and have we, just to check in if that's what your timeframe is, if it's still.
I think, I think it'll be important, I think it's important data that will be of interest to us as we even build future goals. So I think it's that important that we need to accomplish it. If at some point in time we find that we don't have all of the data that we would like, I can always come back and we can have that discussion. But I think it's very important and actually it's not something that I'll be doing personally. For instance, when students are thinking about going to a different high school, that's a guidance function that our guidance councils at the middle school would be, would be looking at. Probably some high school people, some of our administration at the high school would get involved and it's not, you know, as we, as, again, as we see it from grade to grade, it's not a lot of students.
It's not a lot of schools. I mean, when you think about it, there's only a half a dozen schools represent 75% of the, I mean, you've got Zavarian, you've got St. Catherine, Southeast Regional, Charter School and Bishop Fian represent 70%.
So it's, I think, I think it's doable, Kate, but I appreciate that comment.
The next item on the agenda is the school building authority update. And Chris and I and Paul went into Boston with the town manager and the finance director had a fabulous field in the state. Let me ask Chris to give a brief update to the public and then I'll ask Paul if he wants to add anything as well. But just absolute phenomenal news for this community relative to the state agreeing to partner with us going forward and taking this to the next stage. So, Chris?
Thank you. As Larry just mentioned, we did attend a meeting on December 20th and I think two positive kind of overview pieces that I'd like to share is the sense of interest from the school building assistance personnel.
Right.
Their strong interest in working closely with us. And when I say us, I'll reiterate what Larry just said, not only with the school committee, with our central administration, but also with the town. And it was, I think, good for us to make sure that Andy Gala was there as the town manager and Randy Scollins as the finance director. Jim Thrasher had planned on coming and had a last-minute scheduling conflict. So I think that all of us in there together, I think, will send a very strong signal to the school building assistance group. We're a, I think, a somewhat of a special and unique case for them for a couple of reasons. One is we are in that small category that's called repair renovation, which is, which is a small category compared to the 423 others that they're still looking at. So, but they also, we're not a major repair in terms of dollars. Our 13 million, which is what we have put in, but may change depending on the work that they do with us, is relatively small dollars at the state level when, when they're, as they're approaching it. So they said to us that this is even unique within that 27 building repair group that they're looking at. So I think we're going to be somewhat of a pilot, somewhat of a model for the state and they were very pleased with the, the report that I mentioned at an earlier school committee meeting, that the, they had a team from school building assistance that came out just as we were hearing that our name was so high up on the list. And that, that report that they wrote for the board, the school building assistance board, was very positive. They know that we're proactive and that we've been doing this work and I give, again, I give Mike O'Leary and this committee and Paul Jackson and others credit for all of the work that's taken place over the last few years to tee this up, to get it ready. I think the work the McGuire Group did and that proactive work, I, they were very pleased about all of that and it was really evident during the meeting that they know that we have plans in place. And so now the next step, and this is, and I think I need to say this, I'll probably say it as we think about this over the next few months, probably 100 more times, we are breaking new ground with this new board. And I think they do want to work in partnership with us and I guess in other building projects in other communities, that was never the case before. They want to partner with us once, the former way of doing business was that once the community was given approval, you're really on your own. So they want to make sure that they can add some of their expertise and efficiencies. Quite frankly, they're looking to protect state money and they should. So they're looking to do that. They want to work with us hand in hand as we move through the next phase of the process. So there's, and again, I'll, we'll really defer to people who probably know much more about this than I do. There'll be an initial compliance certification and a feasibility agreement that seems to be the next step that they'll be sending to us in a packet. We were expecting it, I would think, anytime in the next, in the next week or two, I would think. The scope and budget agreement, they'll, the scope of the project, the cost, the schedule, the refining, the reimbursement rate, and so there's, there's all that work. The first thing is we, we need to look at an owner's project manager that, and that's an integral part of the new plan for the program. They have a designer selection panel that works through MSBA, through the building, school building assistance group. So all of that work will be things that we'll be starting and looking at in the next few weeks.
I guess, I asked some questions to them so that we could clarify exactly where our position was. So for instance, I said to them, should we leave here thinking that we have a deal or we don't have a deal? And they clearly articulated that the next step is to bring on some help to assess the feasibility, the timing, the budget. We talked through what that might cost. They said that would cost approximately $250,000, of which they would pay their share and we'd pay our share. I said, well, what would that share be? And they said, well, it starts at about 50%, but there are bonus points that one can earn. And we said, well, what are the, what are the bonus points? And we went through all the bonus points. And so we left with the, with the, with the following. Number one, not only do they want to work with us, they're going to send us this material for us to sign. They want us to appoint someone to this board, which is an oversight kind of a board. They want us to work with them on hiring an outside person who will start working, the drawings, the architects, those kinds of things, and they will fund their 50 to 65%, whatever we end up deciding on for that. Now, the other thing that they made clear is that when that part is all done, then you've got, you've got an exact price, an exact timeline, you have a whole project plan to go forward. They would then take that to their board for approval, would expect their board to, you know, to approve their recommendation. And then it comes back to the town and the town has, I believe they told us, 30 days to get a vote from the, from the town to fund our portion. So let's just say for argument's sake that the cost was, let's just use for round numbers for a second, it was 10 million and our share was 35%, we'd have to come up with 3.5 million over the, over the project. So the town would have 30 days to vote as a community whether or not we will provide the funding of the 3.5 million and the state would provide their 6.5. So they made it very clear that they want to move forward with us. They were very appreciative of the fact that this committee over the last two years has worked on the public relations around the schools. We've done the meeting with the schools, we've done the video of the schools, that we've got the selectmen on board, we've got the town manager, et cetera, on board, and then we've already been working on how would we fund our portion of this repair. So we left there feeling very, very good that this is going to move forward in the way we wanted it to. Now, that said, there were a couple of cautionary things for us. Number one, as they, as we've said all along and they reiterated, this is not an easy project in the sense that you just, it's not like you close the high school down, renovate it for six months and then bring the kids back in. And, and some of this stuff can only be done when the, when the students aren't there. And so it may have to be done over, let's say, a one or two-year period of time. It's not going to start and finish very quick. going to start and finish very quickly. And so that in itself will add a degree of complexity because, do you do A first, and then F, and then C, and then D? So it really has to be thought through and figured out what it's going to, what's the process going to be. Number two, once you start repairs, things you didn't anticipate can happen. And so that adds a degree of complexity as well. So what they've said to us is, what we like about Foxborough is you folks have really done a tremendous job in your community in building the support for the program, and you've done a great job with the maintenance of your schools. And what we think, we look at this project and say, for twelve, thirteen, fourteen, some small dollar amount, we can make an investment that'll put that school in great shape for the next thirty years. And that that is a fabulous opportunity for the state to invest. And we'd like you to be a showcase. And we'd like to reward those that have done the kinds of things that you folks have done, rather than just going out and building brand-new buildings all the time. Now, the other thing that's kind of exciting from my viewpoint is what they said to us is that, well, being a little bit greedy, we asked about, well, what about the roof on the Borough School? Because we know we're going to have to do that soon, too. And what they said is, you can only work with us on one project at a time. But once this project is done, you can come back in with the request for the roof of the Borough School, and we'll go through the same process with you again. And again, the example would be, the state wants to work with those communities that are investing in their buildings, and where small-dollar items can, can really extend the life of that, that building. So we talked lots of different things in the couple of hours we were there. But we walked away, I think, being in a, in a phenomenal opportunity. We will take it to the next step. We'll then determine what the real cost and project and schedule would be. They'll take it to their board, the board will approve the level of funding, and then we have to go very quickly to, to the citizens of Foxborough for the funding. So we're already working with the town manager and the finance director on how we might do that funding, how we might work that within the debt structure, and how we might do that outside of the two-and-a-half levy. But, so we'll be working those issues simultaneously to working the project plans, so that we're not starting on day one with twenty-nine days to go trying to convince the, the taxpayer that this is a very valuable thing. But when you think about the renovation to our high school and what it's going to mean in terms of the science lab, the windows, the heating, the, all of these things, it's going to make a huge difference. And it's, it may not be a state-of-the-art building when we're done. But when you think about having all the windows replaced, and the heating system replaced, and the air conditioning, and the roof, and you start thinking about the science labs and the bathrooms, it is going to be an impressive building by the time it's done. And if we can get sixty-two to sixty-four percent from the state, I believe the taxpayer in Foxborough will be glad to, to pick up the remaining thirty-plus percent and have themselves a high school that they can be really proud of for the next thirty years. And I think we can commit to them that as soon as that's done, we're going to go right back to the state for our share of the new roof on the Borough School. So I think the work we've done over the last two years on capital, the work we've done on communicating with, with the community is going to stand as well as we work through the project. So we walked out of there very, very optimistic and very excited about what the future brings to us in two thousand and eight. And I think that Paul and, and Michael O'Leary and others have done a tremendous job. They were very clear to us that the presentation that we put together originally, and then when they did their site visit, how impressive they were with the management here in the Foxborough school system. And that's a factor that they use in deciding whether or not they want you to be a partner. So it's great news, I think, for the taxpayer and for the students of Foxborough.
Very great.
Larry, sounds wonderful. Do we have any sense of what the timeframe would be from, from now until when the project plans are completed, or?
Well, they threw out that they thought it could take over a year to pull all that together, do all the drawings and all the analysis, et cetera. Part of what they, what they've suggested is that when you start tearing things apart, you find lots of surprises if you haven't done your due diligence upfront. So they have found if you spend more time upfront doing the analysis and really bringing in the right people to figure out what you need to do and when, and what might be the contingencies when you do this that could possibly happen. And they think that that could take over a year to do that.
So we're looking then at two thousand and nine for when we'd be going to the town to get the town's response to this. Is that right?
It, it could be, it could be. But we, we, on the way home in the car, we talked about the fact that based on, and six of us in the same vehicle, so we were conserving. But we talked about with the work we've done already, we think that's a great basis that's going to get a head start, and it's going to allow us to move the process a little bit faster. The key is getting these initial documents from them so we can review them and sign them and kind of move forward. And we're anxious, at least I am, and I think Chris is as well, to move this forward as quickly as we can, because you don't know what the economy's going to do, you don't know what the state's going to do. And we want to get the funding locked in as quickly as we can. And if we are going into a recession, as some people suggest, we may find it to be more attractive from a cost standpoint to be doing it in a downturn as opposed to an upturn when prices are skyrocketing. So I think from our standpoint, we're going to push it as quickly as we can within the parameters of the program that's been laid out by the state.
I think we're so far ahead because of all that we've done, that we're in great shape, I think, really. Just to be brought in as quickly as we were.
That was very evident, that was very evident during the meeting.
Yeah.
They, they know that, we know what we're doing.
Right. Now, I know that the town would like to see sixty-five or sixty-six percent reimbursement, and it could be a tad less than that, it could be sixty-two or sixty-three. It depends on how we get the bonus, how the bonus points work and how we negotiate that. So they went through those categories, and frankly, they, it's so new, we'll be the first one through the process, that they can't say, hey, how to do it. We'll be a pilot through that. And, you know, but, you know, my, my personal view is, even if they only gave us the fifty percent, we know we need the new roof, we know we need the new windows, we know we need the new heating system, fifty cents on the dollar is a whole lot better than nothing. And so to get at a starting point of fifty and be able to work our way up to hopefully somewhere in the low sixties should be a very significant victory for the town, and hopefully enough to convince the taxpayer to, to invest, you know, thirty-five cents on the dollar, thirty-three cents on the dollar, to have a, a building that will take us through the next twenty-five or thirty years.
There are things that are going to save us in the long run anyways.
Right.
As far as energy. So, I mean, it's not, it's a no-brainer, it's something that needs to be done.
Well, as an example, we spend twice the cost to heat the high schools we do the Ahern, it's the same-sized building. So in the Ahern, we have the new windows, we have the, the automated heating system. Here, we don't have either of those, and we spend twice the amount of money for heat. So we're going to save lots of money in the operating side as well. And, and plus the students, as you know, we've talked about in some of the rooms, just have to wear coats in the winter. That won't be the case anymore. It'll be, it'll just, whether it be the science labs, whether it be the entire building, it will be significantly improved from what it is. And the students over the next twenty-five years will see the benefit of the work that this committee has done over the last two years, and will continue to do in order to get this done. You know, it's just, I, I think it's really great news. And we don't, you know, the state's struggling and having their issues, but being the first in line certainly helps than being fourth or fifth in line.
Well, I think we have something to offer the state. The state is, I mean, we can, we should be very proud that the work has been done. And I think that the partnership is, we could be very critical to the state, because we could make the state look good, and they could use us as their model for everything that they're trying to prove. So the fact that we, that we've done what we've done, it, it works both ways.
Well, we suggested writing art, we, we've suggested working together on an article that could be shared not only across the country, but, but particularly across the communities within Massachusetts to show how a partnership really works, and how a community that does things right, and a state that does things right can really make a difference. And they like the idea of working with us on some articles and other publications that would demonstrate how this partnership adds an advantage to all parties.
I think one thing that's really important, listening to Larry and Chris speak on the subject, I'm sure that, and it behooves us to realize that we have quite an aggressive team going in there representing us.
Assertive, not aggressive.
Assertive, assertive. But you're very knowledgeable, well-prepared.
Good choice, Lawrence.
And it's, it speaks volumes. I mean, you're very credible, and, and you represent us well. And obviously, this is moving forward because of that. And I think that's important, that we have such a great team in place. And we're going to be able to do some great things.
I think that's a great point. And that both the, both the community is coming together, like you said, town manager, finance director, our business, I mean, everyone is coming together, and again.
Well, you get excited about the project, too. It's, it's not, it's something that's really going to be to all of our benefit.
The brass can get that gentleman over there, Frank Moore, to help us continue to build some excitement and enthusiasm to keep our constituents on the toes. Two quick questions, if I may, Larry. The thirty days that we have to have the town meeting, is that after we sign the feasibility contracts, or after they approve the project?
After they approve the project funding. And, and they go to their board, Zelkay Board, we, it's, it's X number of dollars, and the state's portion is Y. Once they approve that, come back to us and say, okay, the state has now approved its funding for its piece, we have thirty days to go and get our approval for our funding.
And then the project plan, which could take anywhere from maybe hopefully six months to a year, comes after that?
No, it's coming before that, because you can't come up with the cost until after the project.
So they do know that.
So the two-fifty, the two, it's kind of like a poker game. And it's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to get into the game, to figure out what is the total cost of this project going to be. The nice thing, what the state says is, we don't think you should have to fund that whole thing. So if we agree on funding it X percent, we will fund that same percentage of the, what they're guessing to be two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the, for the project plan, the feasibility, the cost estimate, the network drawings, all of that. When you have those done, you then know what the cost is going to be. So we have to put in a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and the town manager has encouraged us to put that into our capital request. That as we look at the capital for fiscal '09, one of the most important uses of our capital would be to allocate the hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, again, it's an estimate, but a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for this piece of the study. This isn't a study to go on a shelf, this is a study that will come up with the, the plan, the timeline, and the cost that they can then take to the state board for the final approval on the state side. Now, obviously, there's a risk that when we get this done, and we've both spent our hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, it might be, the state could say, we don't have any money, we can't fund it, or we can't fund it for a year. That's the risk we take in taking this first step with the state. But they also take the same risk, and they're willing to fund it at whatever amount we agree. So we think that that's a pretty good risk from our standpoint. We know we're going to have to do this one way or another.
So it's going to
And so we might as well go through it. At least, even if, even if the state parted ways at the end of this first phase, we got maybe two-thirds of this phase paid for as well.
Which we would have needed anyways.
Which we would have needed.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
And, and certainly, the state isn't going to spend their two-thirds on this piece and then say, no, we're not interested anymore. Now, on the other hand, if, if this piece came back, and instead of thirteen million, it came back at thirty million, well, that could be a very different thing. But if it comes back, you know, plus or minus a million either way, I would anticipate that we would, we would end up getting the green light from their board. And then we have to be prepared. We have to work during this next twelve months while this work's being done, helping the, the community understand what the process is, what the timeline is, what are the, what are the things we're planning on doing at the high school, constantly educating them so that when we get that okay to go, we need to move very quickly on that. We can't then take three months to build a case for why the taxpayer should fund that. We need to be thinking that right now on what the cost, how we're going to fund it, what's the impact to the taxpayer, et cetera, and start working that communication.
Larry, we've been doing that all along, but can we maybe decide to have monthly updates, or whenever, you know, even if something isn't particularly new in this process, but just as a way, again, to keep it in the forefront, just like we've done, you know, in the past, with just highlighting the needs of the, of the Foxborough High School.
Yeah, and in fact, one of the things we've talked about is having Andy and Randy come to a meeting and, and talk publicly about how we might finance this, how we might fund it, what the impact might be. There are a number of scenarios that we've been thinking about. We want to do that at the right time, we don't want to do that prematurely. So they want to work with us in that communication effort. And, and once we get the paperwork signed, we'll announce that. And then we can certainly put it on the agenda. Wendy could put it on once a month, or even a five-minute update, or a twenty-minute update, on kind of where we stand on that, so that everybody knows where we're moving. And we should also, out on the website, have a whole section devoted to that where people can, can see what's going on. Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. One of the, the other piece that we're waiting for, you know, are those particular guidelines in terms of timing and all of that. They were kind of throwing out some numbers, and we were listening and trying to figure out logistically how that would work and not work. And they're, I think they're also willing to listen, so that if we needed more than thirty days because we had to put the plan together, or the timing just didn't fit with, with their approval process, et cetera, I think, I think they're, I think they'd be open to some of that. But when we get those guidelines, we'll make sure that everyone, everyone is aware.
I think the, one of the key messages I think I heard from them is, I don't want to get to the altar. We've done all this work, and then Foxborough says, no thanks, we're not interested anymore. They want to know that there's a commitment all the way along, that when we get to this final price, and they agree to their two-thirds, or whatever it might be, that Foxborough isn't now just starting to figure out their thirds, says, okay, give us six months to figure it out. And so we need to be working on that right now, and that's what we're already doing. And
So the message is, if we want to be in the pipeline, we need to make sure the town and everyone is with us, so we truly are in the pipeline.
And the selectmen have been so very supportive, the town manager is supportive, the finance director is very supportive. So the message is that we came back from Boston, the day of the snowstorm in Boston, is just very, very positive.
Yeah.
So.
Good one.
Another quick question. Is, with the new model from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and this may be part of the guidelines, because now, but now that we've gotten this further along and into the poke, to the threshold of the poker game, will there be an opportunity under their new model to build in some escalation clauses? For instance, it's great that we could possibly have a recession, at least for building. It may not be great for the rest of our citizens. But the fact, if it's going to take us a year for the project plan, the costs will continue, even in a downturn, will continue to escalate. Do they figure that in?
They've figured it in in a little bit different way, at least from what I know now, and it may, that may change a little bit. But one of the pieces that was much more attractive to Randy was that they pay monthly. You, you reimbursed every month.
So it's not like you wait.
So as long as you submit those bills.
There you have it, that would take care of everything.
Exactly. So that, that's how they're getting to that.
That's how they're going to reduce the escalation.
Right, yeah, monthly.
And, and part of their partnership is, we, based on all the work we do across the community, we know what the prices should be, we want to help you negotiate those prices. We really want to be a partner with you. We're saying, no, wait a minute, now, over here, this is what the rate is, you need to be able to pay that. So they want to work with us to keep the cost down to the lowest possible level without sacrificing quality.
Yeah. That's the efficiency piece from the state level that we can, that we can use.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a, a town building committee or whatever, do they need to be involved with this at all? Like, they oversaw the, the Ahern project and the town project. When do you need to approach them on this?
Well, it, it's interesting, and we'll have to have some further discussion. And, you know, Mr. O'Leary was, is well-involved in that whole process, and he was with us. There will be a, I'll call it a clerk of the works, there'll be, there's a whole process that they use. When we get all of their kind of instructions, Mike and Paul and Chris and others will go through all that, and then they'll figure out that timeline, and then they'll approach the appropriate people in the community to do that.
Yeah, but Michael O'Leary is very aware, obviously, he's on, he was on the Public Safety Building Committee.
Because I know they're, I forget what they call themselves, but there is a committee in town.
Right.
That kind of oversees some of this, and do they need to be involved at some point?
They do need to be involved.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, we're pretty close to being on schedule, so being close to nine-thirty, give or take four minutes. Terranova testing update, Ms. Vannelli.
Thank you.
See if you can do this within the fifteen-minute window.
Thank you. Well, just to jazz people up, we'll talk about test results at nine-thirty P.M., so hopefully we'll go through this a little bit quickly, and I'd be happy to take questions as we go along, if the community has questions. Just to give you a little bit of background, I'm going to be showing you the, the Terranova results from the past three years, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for getting that all up on the TV, so that people at home can see. And Terranova, and that, that is how it's spelled, there's no space in between the words, it's a brand name, so we made sure to put it exactly the same as it is in the company's literature, is a standardized test. It is a national norm reference test. So just to make sure people know what that is, that means that it's, it's a private company, it's a test that's given nationally, it's normed with a, what they call a norming group. So they select and advance hundreds and thousands of children across the country, and they assess them on the, on the Terranova assessments. And then that becomes the norming group, that becomes the, the average group, if you will, the national average. And everybody else who takes it, that is compared to that norming group. So it's a large nationally-representative group of students. When we get the scores back, the scores most reliably are compared as national percentiles. So for example, if a particular test said that we were at the seventieth percentile, that means the average score for our students here in Foxborough was equal or better than seventy percent of the kids nationally in that original norming group. As opposed to the MCAS, As opposed to the MCAS, the MCAS is, people think that's a standardized test and it's standardized in the sense that there are other groups of children who take it, but it's not a norm reference test. There is not a norming group every year that they compare the other kids to. It is actually called a curriculum-based assessment or a criterion-referenced test. So the state has certain standards they want kids to attain, and when the MCAS tests are given, it assesses the degree to which each student and the district as a whole meets the standards that are set. So the MCAS compares kids or groups of kids against a set of standards that they want them to know and be able to do. The Terranova compares their performance against the original group of students in terms of comparison. In Foxborough, we've been giving the Terranova's each October, so it's a fall exam. So this first line graph that I prepared shows the different grade levels. So going left to right at the bottom, we've been giving it in grades 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, not beyond that.
And then, what's the cost of Terranova testing?
A little more than $47,000 a year in Foxborough. So what has been given the last few years is what they call a reading assessment that is, it has a reading composite score, that's, I'm just going to show you the composite scores. There are two small components and then it's one larger reading composite score. There's a language mechanics and then a larger language composite score. I'm only reporting on the composite, so the main score in each area, reading, language, math, and those three are rolled together for a total composite score on the Terranova in its entirety. So on the left, it's the national percentile score. So if you just look at the colored lines that are going across, even if you can't see it that well, you can kind of see that they look the same. So starting at grade 2 on the left and going to grade 2, grade 9 on the right, our different groups of students are roughly, in comparison to students who performed on this test nationally, we're right about the same spot. You can see our 7th graders as a whole group, their composite scores were a little bit above the other grades, so our current 7th grade performed a little bit better on the Terranova's than the others. But it's relatively straight across, not a lot of variation in the test, not a lot of differential in most of the grades between reading, language, math, and the total score, all clustered kind of together, so they look relatively similar. Questions on that before I go to each grade? I'm going to go to the grades really quickly. This is grade 2 over the last three years. Now, even if you see difference in the bar graphs, and the blue being 2005, the cranberry 2006, and the lighter yellow being 2007, there's not a lot of variations because each bar is on the left, each segment is worth 10 points. So if you look at the first three, it's about 73, the red one is about 70, and the other one, the next one is about 67 or so. I have the exact numbers if people really want to see it. But you can see there's not a whole lot of variation over the three years, three different groups of second-grade students. Grade 3, it looks like there's a little bit of variation, just look at math, for example, anywhere between 63, I'm sorry, these are only two increments. So you've got 61 in 2005, a score of 65 in 2006, and a percentile score of 64. So they're close. They might look bigger on the bar, but they're very close.
But if you look at grade 3 reading composite?
Yes.
It's gone from 73 to 66, and you're saying statistically that's not significant, or?
Well, that's about the biggest variation you're going to see on all of them. It's awfully hard to make a determinant what that might mean.
I guess the question that we've had as a committee over the last couple of years that I've been on the committee, is we've questioned the value of the Terranova tests.
Right.
And we've questioned, what does it tell us and what do we get out of it? And so kind of what I'm hearing you say, and I don't want to put any words in your mouth, but if you can't really denote much of a difference when it goes up or down a little bit, then it raises the question that we've had as to what's the value that we're getting out of this versus the MCAS, which we have to do.
Exactly.
We devote a lot of time probably to get ready for the test, to take the test, and would we really be better off for $47,000 to not have the test and use that time to do math and English and science and history and music and everything else? You know, what are your thoughts about Terranova?
Well, we've had two preliminary discussions with our principals and with some other people, the coordinators, the coordinators, about this exact, all the points you made are all things that we've discussed and have thought of. We are concerned with the loss of instructional time, that's been voiced to us from numerous parties, that it is a test at the Ahearn, I think they said it takes three days to administer. At the high school, it's one day, but they're doing all of these tests in 9th grade all in one day. So you get a question of fatigue a little bit. So loss of instructional time versus overall value is certainly a theme that's come up. Historically, of course, Dr. Myers and I weren't here, but one of the reasons that some people perceive who are doing this is for test prep, you know, to get them better on actually taking tests in anticipation of the spring MCAS. But quite honestly, if you want to just prepare kids for how to take tests, you don't do it in October for a May test.
Would it be fair to say then that you, at least before the budget cycle is finished, are giving serious consideration as to whether we should go forward with this or not?
Yes.
Okay.
That's true.
Go ahead, Katie.
Well, I was looking back at last year and some of the information that we got, which I know you didn't put into this presentation, but you just spoke about, about the different subsets under each category. And I know last year and in previous years, it seems like from those subsets of information that, that information in terms of language mechanics or, you know, spelling, computation, different areas from the language and the math, that that information was used, I thought, to increase student achievement in the classroom or identify those areas where not only did we see weaknesses on the Terranova's, but some of it coincided with weaknesses in the MCAS test, if I'm correct, which I think I am because I did review the.
We did ask specifically for examples of how the Terranova's have been used to look at classroom instruction, to change up what they're doing for instructional planning. And to be honest with you, there aren't a lot of examples. I think that.
That's not how it was presented, though. It was presented that that information was going to be used to.
I can only relate to the recent discussions that we've had. It is, it is true, you can look at, I have last year's presentation, so I did get to see that. And yes, there are subsets. I think part of the problem is understanding the whole field of testing. The Terranova's are based on their determination of national standards in these areas. The interesting thing is Massachusetts tends to have higher standards in everything. That's why Massachusetts always comes out at the top when the states are compared on national assessment of educational progress and other countrywide types of assessment systems, because our state standards tend to be, appear a little bit in comparison to where most of the states are. So our question is, it's not that it's a bad test, it's a good test, but the question is the value for the dollar. So do we really want to know how our kids are doing? I mean, if you look at all of these, and honestly, I'll go through them, but they all look relatively similar. So if you're looking at how we've been doing, if there's only little incremental differences here and there that aren't that significant, do we really, are we most interested in how our kids are doing on a test that's published by a company based on a sort of global set of standards? Would we really care how our kids are doing in terms of meeting the standards set in this state, Massachusetts, where the bar is higher? And yes, it can sometimes confirm, language mechanics need a little work with a particular group, sure, but we get that information from MCAS. So it's nice. I don't know if you want to spend $47,000 and say, we knew that and see we're right. So I think that's the conversation. We're not having a conversation of good tests versus bad tests. We're having the conversation about the value and the usefulness and the time. I mean, when you just, you get a lot of momentum in September, school is starting, but you really get into the curriculum in October, we stop and take the Terranova's for a few days. And so that's a concern by educators.
Martha.
Well, I think what bothers me about something like this is, is it really truly aligned with our curriculum and what we're doing? If you're getting that information from MCAS, and I'm a firm believer, if you want to know what's going on in the classroom, ask the teacher. They don't necessarily need this test to tell them which child they're seeing every day and they're working with every day, where they're excelling and where they need improvement. So I don't, you know, I don't know as where, I would rather see the teacher spending the time getting in the classroom.
Let me also add something, and I think that, just in terms of context of other districts, other districts used not only Terranova but other standardized tests, there are a number of them, when MCAS wasn't tested every year.
And now that it is.
Again, it started in 1998, it was really a grade 4, there was a reading component in grade 3, it was grade 4, grade 8, and grade 10. And then it started to mix a little bit more with the No Child Left Behind Act in 2001, there was the, we're going to test in every grade level, grade 3 through 8 in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and then you can choose nationally what way you want to test in high school. We had already chosen grade 10. So we have consistent data now, grade 3 through 8 and grade 10. And now that's, as you know, that's expanding beyond English Language Arts and Mathematics. So we do have good data now, so, you know, I, we're analyzing this. I think that's, it's fair to say that that's really what we're doing now. We're analyzing this, we're trying to find out, is it useful? One of the criticisms of MCAS in terms of being useful for diagnostic purposes is the fact that it comes back to you so late. Test in May, and you don't get it back until October, you feel. And this, on the plus side, we get this back in a much more timely manner because it is more of a standardized test and there's an operational side to it. So we are taking, I think we are taking a look at it. I think it's prudent to do that, and, but we are seeing, you know, the cost, usefulness, time, in terms of.
I think all those things are valid.
Taking instructional time, which we all find is something we can never have enough of, and we want to make sure that those are the kinds of things that we're looking closely at.
I know what you're saying about testing and we show this population that needs improvement or whatever, but if we have small class size, if we have teachers that are in tune with these students, they know which child is at risk. They don't need just a test to tell them that, because you're working with that child every day.
Plus, you know, the point you brought up was a good one, because yes, we have the MCAS and we do look at that in great detail. Do we have, one question is, do we have the capacity to look at all of this data in great detail so that the perception that we are using it really effectively and the reality of trying to use it effectively are two different things? The other thing Martha's talking about, what teachers do in the classroom, we also have our own system of classroom-based assessments, either assessments, you know, so we have assessment plans that we give that are more geared toward diagnostically telling the teacher what they want, what direction they want to go with the whole class, what, what are the strengths and weaknesses of each student. So we've got different levels of testing already. We have MCAS, we have classroom-based assessments that we do as a district, get lots of information from that. We're trying to collect that data and make it more meaningful and make it more teacher-friendly and get right back to classroom instruction. So how much do you really need, is really the question that we're talking about?
And when you talk about having math specialists, we can pull kids out, we can, you know, help them in a variety of different ways on a day-to-day basis, and not just waiting for a test to find out whether they're at risk or not.
Well, this test is the cost of a math specialist.
How many years have we been giving this test, Terranova's? Do we, I mean, we have the data for three years. Is it three years for grades 2 through 9?
I think it's three years. I couldn't see before that.
So what I, what I think.
I was looking at my calendar before.
Part of the history, remember, our 2003 graduating class was going to get to the 10th grade MCAS, and they never had a MCAS test.
But this is a different test.
Terranova's were put in so that we could get some.
Or at least he's rated against the end.
First year it was given was in '06.
'06.
Okay, so one of the things that we've been told.
'05 it had to have been, because your last year's report.
FY '06.
FY, there you go. Your last year's report, perfect, thanks, folks. So it would have been given in October of '05 in the FY '06 budget. And last year, you had a report on only two years, '05 and '06, so I added '07.
One of the things that we keep hearing as a committee is that we need data for three years, and we talk about, you know, the new math programs, new English programs, before we can really see whether it's increasing student achievement. That's, I mean, I would see that this is definitely a tool that we would want to use to do that. I have to say, it is discouraging to know that we've been giving this test for three years, and my impression was that it was going, it was being utilized for increases in student achievement, maybe not being done as fully as we thought it was being done.
I think it is in some cases and in some pockets, I can't say.
Right, exactly.
But we've had, I think, two sets of meetings, I will call them, and we really haven't had anyone present us with something, with anything that shows what's happened as a result of it. And when you, you know, just this morning, I've been over this, they had three different times and three different ways, and I had a principal in my office and we went over, we looked at last year's, this is the binder, this is all, all the reports you get, which is a lot of paper, and we looked at this year's reports for each grade and looked at last year's. They were so identical that the other person even said, wait a minute, that's this year's? I went, no, no, that's this year's. They look, this binder looks almost exactly like last year's binder.
It does, because even if you compare, you know, grade 7, which seems like they're showing the most increase this year, when you look back at grade 6 in the year 2006, they're very similar, their scores. They're not really having, that particular class has not increased their scores from the previous year when they were in grade 6.
Just kind of look all the same. But I'm, see, I guess my question, I have a few questions in my mind, but one of the questions I have is, if you're really looking to see if the impact of something you tried to improve achievement in one area, if you're really looking to see the impact on that, you will look on MCAS and you'll look in your classroom assessments, this wouldn't really be the kind of test that would show you that. Because the small group of students in the little town of Foxborough in Massachusetts, how we look compared to a national norm, it's going to look about the same every year because that is the nature of it. So I think if.
It sounds like you're supporting the fact that this is maybe not of use to us.
I think we need one more round.
And they'll have that before we sign off on the budget. So if they come to the conclusion that they don't believe it's cost justified, then they will be recommending we take that out of the budget.
And I would have liked to have come tonight and given you specific examples of what we saw and what was done, but it's just not there. So I think it did happen. I know there were some people who looked at it, and parents get the individual reports, and classroom teachers look at it, but we don't really, haven't been able to collect any specific examples of something that was, that came to light because of this test. You know, yes, did it confirm that language mechanics maybe was weak in MCAS? And oh, yep, they came back in October, and yep, they're still a little weak, sure. But we knew that.
We need that confirmation, so.
I don't think most teachers do, nor, but.
Why don't we, why don't we give the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, a little bit more time to analyze it? Chris is going to be proposing to the school committee that we meet next Monday and spend next Monday going through the budget in detail. They will have a chance by then to have had six, eight, 10 weeks since they first put it together, and they will have some revised numbers to present to us, so why don't we take that up at that point? All right?
So we're adding one more meeting.
We want to discuss under other matters that Chris would like to add, a meeting for next Monday night to discuss the budget. Because two weeks from tonight will be the public hearing on the school budget. And Chris and I thought it might be helpful for us to have kind of a work session in public where we talk through and hash through the budget and everyone's thoughts and ideas and where, you know, obviously, the town cannot afford an 8% increase as the original budget had, and so we have to work on where are the areas where we could reduce that, and Chris will come back and make that presentation. And rather than doing it in a subcommittee meeting, we're going to do it in a full committee meeting, allow each member to fully participate as well as the public, and then we'll do our, at the end of the month, we'll do our vote on the budget. All right? But we'll discuss that under other matters.
I would just like to weigh in. Thank you for taking the time to leverage all of your analytical skills and your intelligence. We've heard that there were some questions along the way. I agree with you, Katie, we were, we were told very specifically how things were used. But, you know, but, you know, in the context, we didn't have curriculum, we've been behind in curriculum. Now we have Deborah, we're moving forward, we're getting those things. Jan Norton did say to us, she wasn't sure if that's something that we would want to continue. So it's not as if, this is a good thing, this is a positive evolution, this means we're really taking a look, and there were some questions.
I just think we need to bring those things up.
So we could put it towards books, or we could put it towards whatever it is. I think that's the godsend, because it will help leap us forward to where we need to be with curriculum. And, you know, we made some attempts. Now we're, now we're going to finish the play. So, thank you for doing that.
I mean, I think it's nice to know how you look nationally, but I think after three years and, I don't know the value of the people who have just stayed up just for Terranova's. Do you want me to just quickly flash it through?
No, why don't we, no, I won't.
Because they all look the same.
No, I, I think it's great that you're, you're having not just one conversation, but you're having a series of conversations with teachers and administrators. I thank you for doing that.
I think it's important too for the, and I want to thank you too, Debbie, because I think this is helpful, just this discussion, because I think it's a test that, you know, parents have been receiving at home. And now, I think to, to talk about why, you know, it's outlived its usefulness for us, you know, is, is important. So, I appreciate you.
It's a good idea to try. I just think at some point you have to say, is it worth continuing? And that's, that's what we're trying to bring.
Well, and I think it shows too, the community, that we are looking at not only ways to maybe spend money to improve student achievement, but we're also looking at what's already in place and what may not be functional anymore. So, I think that's important too.
Correct. And obviously, if we decide to pull this from the budget, we'll have to, as part of the communication plan, the communication with the parents to help them understand why. All right, it's now 9:45, give or take four minutes that we were ahead and we're now behind.
Beautiful.
But we now-
Sorry, Larry, that was all in my fault.
No, no, very important. Deb is going to give us an update on full-day kindergarten.
And this I am excited to talk about. So, it's a great thing. Yes, this is, it's nice to talk about new ideas and things that would help children and help families and be a real positive new idea, new project for the town of Foxborough. So, we're going to be talking about our proposal. That's all it is at this point. We have a proposal for implementing full-day kindergarten in Foxborough as a choice that parents could make. So, we're hoping to have enough interest that we could pilot some full-day kindergarten classrooms in each of the three schools in the fall. And I'm going to tell you how we, how we think we can do that. And so, this is really considered our initial planning information. So, I don't want anyone to say, you know, wow, we're going to have all full-day kindergarten September. No, we're not. We're in the planning phases. We're trying to determine how we can fund it and whether there's enough community interest in the program. So, the state of Massachusetts has, for a number of years, had a kindergarten development grant. And their goal has been to promote universally available full-day kindergarten. What they mean by universally available is that all families would have access to full-day kindergarten in the state of Massachusetts. And they use the grant to support school districts who are trying to open additional full-day kindergarten classrooms. So, they're supporting districts who don't have any, like us, and we're trying to maybe move toward that. And they're also supporting districts who may have some and are trying to add more or may not have enough money. This was in the state's full-day kindergarten report. I have made folders for committee members and I have a list of the resources as a handout for the people who are present in the audience. But nationwide, depending on which of two sources you believe, somewhere between 16 and 65% of children attend full-day kindergarten nationally, which was higher than I expected, to be honest with you. In the 2005 to 2006 school year, which is the last year they have really good data on, 61% of all children were enrolled in public full-day kindergarten in 81 districts in Massachusetts, largely due to that kindergarten development grant. So, roughly two years ago, 81 districts were taking advantage of the kindergarten grant. And of, in those 81 districts, 61% of the kids that resided in those communities were sending their children to full-day kindergarten. That's the same thing, same bullet at the top. Bottom bullet, an additional 32 districts were in transition to full-day kindergarten during the last school year. So, now we're really getting up a number when it comes to the number of communities that offer full-day kindergarten. So, the, in FY '07, which just ended in June, six months ago, 130 districts received that quality full-day kindergarten grant, which represented over 1,900 classrooms. 32 additional districts were in transition to full-day kindergarten, representing an additional 130 classrooms in Massachusetts. So, a lot of people are looking at full-day kindergarten in, that are leaders in their community, either the school committee, the school administration. Overall, grant funds from the Department of Ed are not what you think they are.
So, everybody thinks, we're going to get our own money, we can open it.
They only fund about $15,000 per classroom. And that is roughly 15, anywhere between 15 and 25% of the total cost of a full-day kindergarten program. And you have in, in your folder and in your school committee packet, a chart that shows the expenses and the additional costs, which we can talk about during the question period if you like. Many districts charge families an annual fee to offset the cost of implementing full-day kindergarten. So, I just want to talk a little bit about the fee in our proposal. The fee basically would be that families would pay if they choose the option of full-day kindergarten. So, half-day kindergarten would still be free and free public education. The additional half a day, which will put their child in full-day kindergarten, there would be a fee. In our proposal right now, we have it set at $2,500. And I just want to talk to you about area communities. The $2,500 is the average fee charged by communities in Massachusetts who are transitioning to full-day kindergarten. So, that is, that is the State Department of Ed's data that that comes from. In the area, we surveyed 11 area districts, those closest to us geographically. Of the 11 area districts surveyed, which were Canton, Easton, Franklin, Mansfield, North Attleboro, Norton, Plainville, Sharon, Stoughton, Walpole, and Rentham, that's in your folder if you're, remember, you have a folder. I think it says a handout up on the counter. Of those 11, eight out of the 11 of our neighbors offer full-day kindergarten. Only three don't. Now, that doesn't include us, the three doesn't, three others don't. Of the eight that do offer it, three out of the eight offer only full-day kindergarten. Five out of, the other five, no, I shouldn't say, yeah, the other five offer a combination, basically a choice of half or full day. And five out of the eight full-day kindergarten programs charge a fee. And the fees range from $2,250, which is just below what we're proposing, up to a high of $4,000. So, I'll give you some examples. Canton charges $4,000 a year. Norton is, charges $2,500. Sharon charges $3,700. Walpole charges $3,000. And Rentham, $2,250. So, of the, our neighbors who charge a fee, we would be on the low end of the fee range, but right at the state average. Our goals really for the full-day kindergarten are to expand the school day. I think, Larry, you mentioned earlier that there's so much to teach and, boy, the foundation in, in the early childhood experience is really important. So, of course, the most important goal is to expand the school day, provide additional instructional time for the development of those early learning concepts and skills. And not that we would add more, I want to make it really clear, we wouldn't add more to the curriculum, but we would go deeper. So, kids, it's tough to get all the concepts and skills into a kindergarten program in two and a half hours. By the time they come in, take off their coats, I mean, you have to have them have a stack, you're really down about probably an hour and a half of instruction. So, if you think about literacy skills, math skills, hopefully hands-on science, maybe some social studies, some arts in there would be great. I mean, to do that all in a half-day program, you can imagine, is really challenging. So, kids would have more time for hands-on, project-based learning, which is developmentally appropriate, to learn the really important things that we know they have to learn, to have a good foundation to go on to the later school years. One of the biggest things you've heard from educators in the last 15 years is that kids are not coming to school with language and vocabulary that they used to come with when, you know, in the, in the last generation. So, we, one of our other goals in terms of Foxborough would be to enhance our vocabulary and language development in those early years. That's really important and it's been an identified need everywhere I know for about 15 years. And then the last thing of our three major goals is to provide a more integrated early learning experience. Now, what we mean by that is a, a better way to transition from their preschool experience to the kindergarten where we can expand their knowledge and then go on to first grade with an easier transition. But it also means for children right now, especially of working parents who might have multiple childcare settings during the day, go to half-day kindergarten, go to a daycare situation, go to somewhere else, that this sort of integrates their day a little bit better. So, it, I think the $2,500, we don't, we haven't charged any fees here in Foxborough for athletics, for music, for any of those, for transportation, for any of those things that many other districts are doing. So, this would be a little bit hard to swallow, to think about a fee to implement a new program. But if you are a family that's already paying for private daycare, you would probably look at it as a-
This is a bargain.
Pretty good deal.
This is cheaper than paying for a new childcare.
And your, and your kindergarten child will be eligible for before and after-school care, as would the rest of the, the world in their elementary school.
It makes more of a continuum for the child during the day.
It does. It really does. So, it, it's, this is, in terms of the concept, I would describe it as a no-brainer. I think we, we are one of the few that aren't looking into it, if not planning, if not transitioning. I think we really need to look at it, whether, whether it's going to be a viable alternative and whether we can do it now or not. But I think we certainly need to start talking about it.
Well, I think your survey is excellent. I think the parent survey.
Are you talking about September of '08 or September of '09?
We're talking September of '08 for, for, to pile, if we get enough interest. So, the parents of incoming kindergarten students, that's my, my, next to the last slide, I think. The parents of the incoming students will be registering the children for kindergarten this month, January 16 to 18. During that registration process, they will get a survey. And you can see in the packet, we kept it pretty simple. I would definitely enroll my child and I would pay the fee. I probably would enroll my child, but I need a little bit more information. I definitely would not enroll my child. Those are the three choices. We will be holding parent information sessions in the next couple of months in each of the elementary schools so they can learn a little bit more about what it would mean. And then we should know, we'd like to come back, we talked about this today, we'd like to come back in the next six weeks, once we have the data from the parents, to see how much interest there really is. And we have applied to have transition assistance for up to five classrooms. So, $15,000, up to five classrooms. If we have only interest for three, we'll do three, one at each school. So, that's what we applied for, for assistance from the Department of Ed. And we probably wouldn't have interest beyond that. So, that's what we're doing.
Mark, you got a question?
Well, I, I think there's one thing that I, I find very interesting when I look at, you know, where students have gone. You take roughly 16 students that have gone to the charter school, probably because they offer full-time kindergarten. I asked Paul, how much does it cost us for each of those students? So, it's $10,000, what is it?
$10.5.
$10.5.
$10.5 for each child who's in full-day kindergarten.
Right, that's what it costs us. Okay, so-
Well, $10.5 across the board for each child that goes to the charter school.
To the charter school, because it's no matter what. So, if, if by offering full, and this is just a thought, if by offering full-time kindergarten, I think we need to know what is their class size versus our class size, what sort of an offering we're having. Because I, I've, I've heard that some of the classes there are larger. So, that would be inviting if we, if we knew that for a fact, what was their class size compared to what is our class size? And you're talking $160,000 that would stay here, that would not go to the charter school because we are offering. So, if it's going to cost you $261,000, say you had 15, 16 kids come back here, now you only, I, I think we could even work with the numbers at that point, depending on what we got for a grant. So, I think there's a little bit more to this possibility.
There are also families that pay for private full-day kindergarten, like childcare or something like that. So, I think there are a lot of pockets of families.
You know, I think this has a lot of possibilities, but I think we need to know what is their class size offering versus ours. Because that's very entertaining to some parents when they know what the class size-
The other thing I've asked Chris for the meeting on Monday to present to the public, as well as the school committee, an overview of how, how we lose funding for the charter school. How much is it? What is the cost? Really helping people understand because some people feel as though that the funding that the state has for the charter school is inappropriate. And Chris is going to share what the Association of School Superintendents are advocating in terms of changing of that formula. And some would argue that if you, if you didn't have that charter school and those students were here, financially, we would be in a very different position from the schools because we've got our fixed costs are all taken care of, along with it being the number of teachers. And so, the impact in any one class would not be that much. But the revenue that we're now losing for that would come, would stay within the community and could fund lots of different things. So, I've asked Chris to do a review so everybody really understands what the impact is. What is the current funding formula and what are the proposals to change those? Because I think that's, that's good information for, for people to have. So, we'll have that at the next meeting as well. Yes, would you like to state your name for the record and your address, please?
My name is Christine Corcoran. I live at 92 Beet Street. I'm actually here in support of this. I have two five-year-old girls, twins. And one of the dilemmas that my husband and I are running into right now is the fact that we both work full-time. And we are looking for something full-day for our children. Currently, they are in a daycare program, full-time, something that they're, they're very used to. They're in a kindergarten, actual kindergarten program. They just met, didn't meet the cutoff this year, so they will be attending. And to be very honest, to Martha's point, one of the places we're looking at is the charter school because they do offer full-time kindergarten. And I would be in support of, of full-day kindergarten in the public. Foxborough School is something we would like to happen and we would have no problem paying the tuition since it's something we're used to doing anyway and it is a bargain for us.
Well, we do need to look into whether we're going, if you have multiples, whether we're going to charge you full.
Oh, it's something I'm used to, so again, it's still a bargain if, even if you do charge you full.
You only know the worst case scenario, but you know, it could be better.
And I have friends in the Foxborough area who have children of the same age that are looking for the same thing, if you think about it. There are a lot of parents that work full-time that do have to look for that extended care. And I think some points, some good points have been made tonight. You know, I think the children don't have enough time in two and a half hours. And I think full-day, and I can tell you, my children are learning Spanish, they're learning sign language, they're, you know, they're thriving and they're, and they're enough, you know, a four-hour, you know, class right now. So, I definitely would support something like this and I'll be filling out that survey to say yes.
Oh, that would be interesting.
Same to you.
All right. That's great. I actually, I appreciate your comments. I think she's making a really important point, which is some of us, you know, we need to think a little outside the box. Some of us are used to, you know, the, the last generation where maybe the kids didn't go to preschool, maybe that was their first experience, so kindergarten was a little transition to the school experience. But if you, if you're in elementary schools, you can see that going from a half-day kindergarten sometimes to a full day of reading and writing in first grade is really tough. So, if you could have, if you could transition to the full day in kindergarten where the academic demand of reading and writing isn't quite so laborsome, but you're really able to develop mentally, acquire some pretty good literacy and math skills and other things, that would benefit. I think the, the majority of kids are engaging in some type of preschool or care outside of the home care situation or experience now. So, for them, it's not a big deal to go to full-day kindergarten. And I, I know most of the community's aware, I came from one of these districts that's on the list. And I, I, until November, worked in this district that has full-day kindergarten only and has had only full-day kindergarten for more than eight years. And we had 16 or 17, it was no fee, but we had fees for everything else, just not for kindergarten. But, you know, I personally, for four and a half years, seen the benefits of full-day kindergarten. And for them, I don't, they could never go back the other way. All the kids go to full-day kindergarten at Stoughton. And it is a wonderful experience for those kids. So, I fully support it. I've seen the benefits firsthand for quite a while. And I think families, while some families may choose not to do that, and that's fine, I think that for a lot of families, it's going to be a really viable option. And just one thing about the, the fee, though, I do want to make sure I say for people watching at home, if your family's income is less than 25% of the state's median, median income, you will not be charged a fee at all. That is one of the guidelines of the state grant, so.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Happy New Year.
Deb, I think that this committee has been very supportive of moving in this direction, and I think that, you can certainly ask each member, but I think that we would encourage you to move forward as quickly and as judiciously as possible to get the survey information, come back to us. While we never like to charge a fee, when you look at what parents are paying already, and you look at what the area rates are, it's an attractive program, and if we get enough interest, I think it's something that we certainly will push as a school committee to make a reality.
I think we've been talking, I mean, I think the community has been talking about it for years. You know, the school committee may have just started talking it more realistically in the past year or two, but I think it's a wonderful idea.
And I do think it's going over for September. I mean, Paul was kind enough to go over some other costs that we would want to think about, transportation, classroom furniture, we did all that estimate, you can see it in your packet. And I really think that between the $15,000 per classroom we'll get from the state and the tuition fee from the parents, we will be able to afford all of, and we don't have a space problem, we've been able to talk about the space issues, so we'll be able to make space. So, I really think we could, we have a really good chance of implementing, to whatever extent we have interest for September.
When will you know about the grant?
We already applied for the grant.
Oh, all right.
So, well, yeah, when will I know? That's a good question. Soon.
But they're not turning people down?
They're not. In fact, they, the people who applied in November, or October, the people who applied in October, they were making the decision in January, but they were seeking out other districts to participate. This is one of the Department of Education's goals, is to expand full-day kindergarten. So, they were very happy when we were going to apply in December, and that they, so I would assume if they're making the first round of decisions in January, but they've already told us they have more money than that first group applied for.
Well, when we went in, when we spoke to them, to Pat Haddad, she said that the state was very disappointed that they didn't get to use all the money they had for full-day kindergarten. So, I think the fact that you've got it in there, I'd be shocked.
I'd be shocked if we don't get it.
I'd be shocked if we don't get it.
Now, is that a one-time hit, or is it a two-year grant? How long would it go on?
No, it's, we applied for the transition to full-day kindergarten grant. The grant that follows is called Quality Full-Day Kindergarten, which I had in Stoughton for all those years. So, that still is just under $15,000 a classroom. So, as long as there were classrooms that you expanded to full-day that required new staff, which of course it will, additional staff, then they'll keep funding it every year. It's just, it's a simple formula, number of classrooms times almost $15,000.
I think it would be lax not to do it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, let's move on to the communication plan update.
I'm just going to take a minute, because some of this was already talked about in some of the budget presentation. I just wanted to make sure that the committee and the public knows that one of our goals is building a communication plan, and we've had, and Paul Bordelotti mentioned, we've had a very successful initial part of developing Connect Ed. We still have some more work to do on that, we're continuing to do that work. I see it as a, actually, the principals now have been trained to utilize Connect Ed, so we are moving it to that level. We haven't used it yet with the principals, but they've gone through a training session already. We are growing the number of phone numbers and email addresses, and we expect in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a very solid plan with that. Frank just walked out of the room, but I think the relationship that we've developed with the Foxborough Report has been very positive. We've had good press, good stories, I think, across the board. Principals are owning this a lot more in terms of making sure that they're contacting the press and making sure that a lot of the good things are going on in the schools, being articulated. The school newsletters, I get a chance to read each one of them, and they're very well-done, I think, and good communication at the very local level, and I've heard good, positive information from parents. One of the goals that we did mention, that I'm working on now, have a meeting next week with a couple of people that are interested in helping us without coordinating our websites and coordinating our calendars. So, I'm hoping that in a future meeting, I come back to you and say, I think we can fund this in this way, and I think it'll help us enormously to make sure that all of, that we don't have redundant data, we don't have misinformation, we don't have old data. And so, Paul Bordelotti and I were talking a little bit about it today, but I have a meeting scheduled for next week. I shared with you on email that the parent leaders piece that we've put together, that Debbie had an opportunity to attend the first meeting, and Debbie had an opportunity to attend our second meeting, has gotten off to a very, very strong start. People, I think, are very interested in continuing. We initially put quarterly in the goal statement, we actually have decided to meet monthly, and we have a range of topics. Part of it is budget. I explained to them what, where we were with the budget at the last meeting. Debbie talked about some of the curriculum work that's going on right now, in terms of reviews and things that we've already been working on. So, although we don't have a formal plan yet, that I think is going to take a little bit more time, I think we have a lot of pieces that we've already put together that I wanted to share with you.
Excellent. Martha, policy revision update?
Well, before you go, could you repeat that phrase from the Foxborough Report? Was Frank's back in the room? The man is back.
I said that our work with the Foxborough Report has been very positive, and I appreciate that, Frank, that you're always available when we have something that we want to share, and I think we're available at all levels to make sure that the information that you need is readily available this morning.
We appreciate what all of you do.
The Pulitzer, you can mention that to him, too. Okay, Martha, can you give us an update on where we are with the policy revisions?
Well, I'll tell you, I couldn't be happier and more proud of this committee and the percolant effort that we put into this policy. I don't know how many policy reviews Chris has done, but I think he was amazed that we got through it as well and as quick as we did, and I think Jim Hattie was a little bit shocked, too.
He was more repulsed.
And I think it's a huge credit to this committee and the commitment that we put into this, and we are, we finished up with our, what we had to do, per se. Wendy can bring us up to date. I think she talked to Jim about when we might have a booklet back. Then we'll go into a first reading and a second reading, and we still will have a few probably coming back to us, but we can deal with them on a meeting-to-meeting basis as we include them, but at least we will have something in place that means something, that's up to date, and that, God help us, if we ever get behind again on this, because it would be a huge embarrassment, as far as I'm concerned.
Wendy, what's the timeline?
I talked to Jim last week, and he hopes to have the new manual to me midweek this week. So, as soon as we get it, we'll go ahead and make up a manual for each member on different colored paper.
Okay. Oh, my God, what's the new paper?
So, we'll have it to you within a couple of days after we get it from Jim, so.
And then, you people can decide when you want a first reading of it.
What I'd like to suggest to the committee to think about is, we have spent, I don't know, 12 or 20 hours going through this throughout the whole summer, and then the other night we spent four hours, whatever, going through the whole thing. And what I would like to suggest is that we make it available to any citizen who would like to look at it, either hard copy or electronic, whatever's appropriate, and we give them time to review it and submit to us in writing, any questions, comments, criticism, whatever they have. And that way, there, we, each of us are able to then think through what their comments are, compare it to the section, and when we take our final vote, we'll have been able to take the time to carefully think through any feedback we have from citizens and be comfortable that we're not trying to rush through this big book and all those comments at the same time we can think it through. But that's just a suggestion for the committee to think about. Obviously, we could just ask people if they have questions and spend whatever time doing that, but I just thought it might be easier if we asked them to submit it to us in writing, give us a chance to really think about it. We've put a lot of effort into it so far. People have had an opportunity to come to the meetings, they've had an opportunity to share any input that they might have, and we've tried, we had some input in some meetings, not a lot, but we've had some. But I think that we should give them the opportunity to review it in advance, review it at their leisure, not just at a meeting, and to provide us with any feedback that they have.
Just one comment as far as putting these out to the public. I noticed that there's one policy in there that relates to the policy book and who has it, and I think whoever asks for or takes one, we have to keep a record of that, because we have the right to recall them at any point in order for us to put in new revisions. And I think that's very important, because you don't want a policy book out there in somebody's hands that a year from now might be outdated on any given policy. So, we need to keep track of who has.
Well, it inevitably will be.
No, I know, but we need to keep track of who has it, because we, as a committee, have the right to recall those books in order to make sure that they're updated, not altered, whatever, because, you know, those are out there for people to interpret, and I think it's our responsibility to make sure that they have a correct copy at all times.
Right. And if we're going to use the web, the school website to house that, as an example, going forward, we want to do that, because if someone else were to house it electronically, and they didn't keep it up to date, then it wouldn't be. So, I think we want to talk to Jim about how do we put it out on the web, makes it easy for someone, then when we update it, it's updated real-time, anyone accessing it is getting real-time data and not...
You know, it's one at the library, do we know it's there?
Right.
So that we can keep track of where they are and update them as needed.
That's a good one.
Good idea.
All right, so, how would the committee like to handle citizens' comments?
Larry, I think that's a great idea. We're so familiar, and look at the amount of time we've put in, but to give, the times when we have had comments, it's, I think it's much smoother if they can, if anyone who wants to be involved in this last step can have the time to think about it, to jot down their thoughts, and I think that will help all of us and ultimately be more efficient and effective moving forward. I think that's a great idea.
So, what I would like to suggest, if the committee agrees, is once we the book is made available, that we give the public at least two weeks to review it for the first reading, and then there's two weeks to the second reading. So, they would actually have a month to get through the book and provide any comments that they might have for us. Someone might only be focused on certain policies, someone might be focused on the whole book, but that should give them more than adequate time to review it, gather their feedback, submit it to us, and for us to evaluate it.
So, what timeframe are you looking?
Well, if we get it on some day this week, it'll probably be...
The 10th or the 11th?
The first meeting in February, probably. Just, depends when we get some material.
And the first reading, I mean, how many will we be able to do in an evening? And I think you're still going to allow...
We're not going to go through them one by one.
No, no, no.
We're going to pass that book, unless anybody has any specific change.
But my point would be...
But to give the time, but if somebody still had, even if they chose not to write it down, but if they had a question, they could still ask us, they would attend the first reading to also ask those questions.
There'll be a time allotted on the agenda, but we're not going to allot three hours on the agenda to answer people's questions. All right?
You know, and if we have some real issues, then we can just put a hold on those.
Right.
That wouldn't be a problem either.
And that's why, my view was, if they submit them in writing and there were some substantial comments or some substantial thoughts, that gives us time before the second reading to say, maybe we need to revisit some of these things and even have a dialogue. And it just gives us all a chance to think it through in a logical way. And we've spent this much time on it, I don't want to rush it the last couple of weeks just to get it done, and I don't want the public to feel as though that they don't have one more opportunity to provide that feedback, but I think that the committee, the committee has the right to be able to think about the comments, not just extemporaneously as someone brings them up, and that's why, if they have them in writing, you'll have a chance to look at them, think about them, think of the pros and cons, and kind of go from there. Yes, Wendy?
Who would you like them to send those comments to, Larry? Do you want them to...
I would like, I would suggest that they send them to you.
Send them to you or you give them to us.
Right, and then, you know, the office of the superintendent, and then the superintendent's office can share them with the committee, and make them available for anyone else in the public that would like to see anyone's comments. I mean, they're a public document, from that standpoint. Okay? It is 10:20. We did pretty well tonight, not quite on time, but pretty close. 10:15, it's other matters, so let me start with Chris.
The only one I have is, I think we have a need for a budget meeting next Monday.
Okay, so the only thing on it will be...
The only agenda item is budget, unless...
Chris, someone's got his finger up. An update on the FY08 budget.
Oh, Paul has, Paul will have ready an FY08, so it will be budget.
Okay.
I think I was right about that.
Before and after.
So, it'll just be two parts of the budget.
And the only way, just to make, you know, we've been talking about the projected deficit for '08, and Paul has some updated numbers, and so he wants to be able to review that with us on a timely basis. So, that's important.
So, that's...
7:00 P.M.?
Yes.
7:00 P.M. Can all committee members make it next Monday?
Yep.
All right, then we'll go forward with hosting a meeting for next Monday, regularly scheduled meeting, with the topic to be the '08 financial results and the '09 budget. Okay? Katie?
Just, I liked the Foxborough Public Schools January Activities Calendar that was in our packets. I think it's wonderful.
I think, yes, thank you for adding this.
Okay, Beverly?
Happy New Year to all.
Thank you. Kate?
I'm also. I thank the Booster Clubs and our PTOs, they've done a heck of a job.
There's just two items that I wanted to update the board on. Number one, Chris and I have had a conversation, ongoing conversation with the town regarding signage for the charter school. Remember the person who was hit out there?
Oh, yes.
And the problem that we're having is that the state is arguing that that part in front of the school is Town Road, and we're saying it's State Road, and therefore, we need state approval to put any signs or anything. They're saying, no, it's state. And so, what the town manager, I said to the town manager, so, let's just put the signs up, what difference does it make? He said, well, you know, if we put the signs up and it turns out that it's state versus town, and someone got a ticket, they could appeal it. I said, I don't care if they appeal the ticket. I want signs up there that say, drive, drive slow, school zone, whatever it might be. And so, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask the committee if you would support me in drafting a letter to the town, asking them, rather than waiting until, A, the state takes the final decision, or B, someone is injured with a car accident, that we encourage them to put signage up. I'm not interested in whether someone gets a ticket or a fine or anything else, I'm interested in having someone recognize there's a school there. You can't tell there's a school there, there's nothing on the road, there's no signs.
Safety issue.
And so, I'd like to have Wendy draft a letter, which I would sign, just urging the Board of Selectmen and the town manager to go forward and no longer wait for the state to make a decision and put the signs up. And they can talk to town council, and they can make a final decision, but I think that we need, we have a responsibility to keep the pressure on all parties to put better signs there before another crossing guard is injured or a student.
I'm sure we had signs there before.
We did. We did. And we had a flashing light, and there's been talk about a flashing light to put back there. And again, it's arguing, who owns the road, kind of thing. And we've said, you own it, you put it there, and then we maintain it, and we pay the electricity and stuff. So, I just, I want to elevate it, I want to put some pressure on getting that. I'm not critical of the town, but if we're going to wait for the state and the bureaucracy, then something else is going to happen, and I don't want that on my conscience, so I want to move forward with urging it.
Makes sense.
The second thing I just wanted to mention is that at our next meeting, we hope to have an update for the committee and the public on where do we stand in setting up our foundation that we talked about, this educational foundation. But one of the things that I want to emphasize, while our goal is to raise 200,000 to 250,000 the first year, teachers will be able to apply for grants from this foundation. Jerry Roy, who has some special programs that aren't, that he would like to do that he couldn't get funding for, could apply for a grant. A Spanish teacher, a history teacher. I want the teachers of Foxborough to know that the reason we're raising this money is to help them do the things that they think they need to do, but they haven't had the funding for. And I hope that when the teachers realize the power and the potential of the granting process, they'll help us sell the tickets, they'll help us raise the money, because the money's not going to the school committee, the money is going to go to help them. And I think that when we're trying to sell the tickets for the Lexus automobile, or the vacations, or the grand party, or that we're asking people to donate for the auctions, I want the entire community to realize the value of this particular initiative, and especially the teachers, if they realize how much this is going to benefit them with the ability of them requesting for grants, then the power of our teachers out there trying to sell these tickets, trying to raise the money for themselves, is going to be very, very powerful. So, I just wanted, I wanted to get the message out, I want the teachers to understand, I want Chris to make sure that they understand what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it, and how it's going to benefit them directly, so that they will be standing in line, trying to help us raise the money for this very, very important nonprofit foundation that we want to establish for the schools. That being it, it is 10:26. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn, motion by Martha, second by Bev. All those in favor? Opposed?